Hello. Can you hear me?
Hi, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
No.
Well, was that a yes or a no?
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Perfect.
So, Aaron, if you want to close down that participants thing on the right. Go ahead and get started. So, um, thanks, everybody for joining us. I know we have, we have a big meeting to get to tonight. We have a lot of people in the room. We've got a lot of people on Zoom. Um, so we have just, uh, we do have a quorum. So just wanted to make everybody aware. We've got, um, Commissioner Kirk and Zeman on, on Zoom and then, uh, four of us, we're planning commissioner members here. So we do have a quorum. So, uh, also Daphne is going to be chairing the meeting, um, tonight because Jeff is out. So, um, go ahead.
All right. Uh, anyways, can I read the line of acknowledgement first to them?
Yes. We, the city of Lacey are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and Squawson Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today who were absorbed or relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as their traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of dispossession, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allowed our nation, state, and city to develop as they have today. We recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of eighteen fifty-four.
Thanks, Eddie. Okay, looking for a motion to approve the agenda for tonight, so now?
Second.
Everybody agree? Anybody disagree? Hey, looking for a motion for the November thirteenth meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. Agreement? Everybody agree? Any disagree? All right. Do we have public comment?
Um, before we get to anybody in the room, I don't know if anybody signed in, uh, in the, in the room, but we did have one person sign in online and that is James McCall. So, Aaron, if you can, um, allow it to talk, James. So, James, uh, we're going to allow you to talk. Uh, feel free to introduce yourself, where you live, and keep your comments to about three minutes.
I sure can. Uh, can you hear me? Yes. Hi. Yes, my name is James McCall. I live in, uh, Lacey, uh, just down, just across basically from the, uh, the middle school and the, uh, off of Mullen Roads. Uh, I'm calling for concerns of an issue that was brought to my attention yesterday over a planning of a sixty unit home project addition to the middle school and the church, um, just off college and Mullen Road. Uh, after being shown this article of in the Olympian concerning this project that they would be building a sixty unit small housing area in a five acre lot adjacent to the school and behind the, oh, actually, there's two schools, one of the elementary, middle school, and then the church has a school as well. Um, in the article, they briefly said something about the, the feasibility of this because of the personnel that are in, they're living in the area, have, having difficulties affording a, a living here and ended up being homeless, living in the car, and they want to build this to assistiate them. And essence, and then what this is talking about is building a homeless encampment of tiny homes to allow personnel that are living on the streets for one of the reason or another to occupy these houses. Um, Washington State Senator proposed a Senate bill of five, three, three, two, which in the process has been approved, which was declining the ability to build these housing compounds within a thousand meters of any school, public or private. And it goes on to address several other issues. And which is this facility, if they do decide to go forward with this, would be with more than within those distances of the two schools that we're talking about. And then the second issue is again, I mean, they, they didn't give a lot of planning information about this, but they talk about the, the cost of the land and the cost of the project itself. I do not feel that this is something that the community of Thurston County, the personnel, the taxpayers themselves should have to be forking up a seven hundred thousand dollars for the process of property of the land, let alone the cost of the, the projects themselves to be going forward. I think there should be a definitely a, a lot more involvement of the people in the community to discuss this issue. And I think that's something that should be widely listened to and have a little bit more public knowledge about it. One day notice of, of one person that's living literally in the backyard of this new compound, I don't think there's enough information that was provided to the personnel. Thank you.
Thank you, James, for your comments. Are you able to add any background on this at all?
Um, yeah, I can provide a little bit of background. Um, if we, sorry, I see Tanya in the participants. If we want to promote Commissioner Moore to panelists, there we go. Perfect. Thank you. Um, so, yeah, there, the, actually, this is in front of the, the lot board tonight for consideration. I don't know if the planning commission is aware, but, um, the city has, has proposed to lot, lot owns a, um, five acre piece of property just south of Camacho Middle School that was to be used as a wastewater treatment plant. Um, they no longer need that property because of, of growth and other things, or the lack of growth, actually, in that area that they're not needing that to, to develop that for their additional capacity. And so, um, the city has made an offer to purchase the property. Uh, and that's in front of the lot board tonight for consideration. And if that goes forward, then it comes back to the city for, and a lot for final agreement on the purchase price and those kinds of things. And, um, right now that it's, the, the proposal would be to, in conjunction with the Thurston County how, housing authority is to actually sell that property to the, the housing authority at a reduced price, that the housing authority would actually develop it for around a sixty unit um, housing development. So at this point, um, the housing authority would, um, they have funding to do a, um, senior, um, housing development there. So number one, residents would be, would be seniors. Um, and then number two, I think the, the key demographic that they're looking for um, certainly is the, the lower income kind of working class people, eighty, fifty to eighty percent AMI, um, that would be unemployed at the school or, or some, somehow associated with the school would be kind of the first priority with the school district. And then from there, you know, kind of low income individuals, um, this is not to be like a, a, an encampment of any kind. These will all be, you know, houses that are all built to, you know, codes and standards. And, um, if you're, if you're interested in, in kind of an example, maybe a similar type proposal, the, the Deo Vista, uh, project that was done by Habitat for Humanity just down Thirty-seventh Avenue from there would be kind of a, an example of a similar concept. Right? So that's, that would be an example of that. So, um, more to come on the, you know, the, the more, you know, will be, will be happening if it does, it really doesn't involve the planning commission at all. But, um, and one way that it could is this could come to the planning commission for a future rezon application. Um, as part of the comp plan update, we may be considering rezoning the property right now. It is zone open space institutional, which doesn't allow for single family residential. Um, and so we would look at zoning it for like a single family residential purpose.
Great. Thank you.
Eddie? Uh, you answered my question. Okay. Just whether it was going to come before the planning commission for anything.
Any other public comments?
Uh, nobody registered, so we can move on.
Okay. Uh, commissioner member reports. So who we have? Oh, Tanya, do you have anything? Elliot, anything?
Nothing.
Spencer?
Great.
Yes, um, I was very interested during the legislative session discussion, uh, last night, uh, to hear that, uh, those who have the multifamily tax exemption right now, uh, for eight years, if they did, uh, convert to include, uh, affordable housing that they could possibly get a bonus twelve years. And so I thought that that was really interesting to see that, that those options are in place to try to make more affordable housing. So it seems like there's a lot of changes and, and maybe some interesting things to support, uh, people being able to live and work, we see.
Yep. And I think Jennifer might actually have part of that on her presentation tonight. So, yeah, yeah, the city is looking at expanding to the twelve year. Right now we don't allow it. We have to kind of opt into that to be able to do a twelve year, uh, extension of the multifamily tax exemption. The council has asked us to look at that. And, um, chances are probably by the first quarter of twenty twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-five, we would have that in place. So more to come.
Eddie, anything? No report? Eddie?
Nope.
I would just add, uh, we finished up our parks work group last night, uh, and our recommendations are, you know, can you confirm the time? It, it would be, I think, the December sixteenth. Is that when the next city council would be?
Yeah, a week from yesterday, the seventeenth.
Seventeenth. So our recommendations are going to city council. Parks, uh, city staff did just a great job and it was really came together surprisingly with all these different opinions. And so it was just a really great work group to be part of. And, uh, nuts and bolts is we're recommending a metropolitan park district to, uh, help fund some of the maintenance and new capital improvement projects. And so more to come. We'll see what city council does, see if they have anything. But, um, it was just a great opportunity. And if you're going to be at city council, that'd be a really cool thing to maybe see what, how it's presented. But it was a great group with really awesome city representation, um, with the, the voting and non-voting members. It was just really good. So. Um, department report.
Yeah. Well, um, obviously tonight we have, uh, two longstanding planning commission members that it's their last meeting. So with Eddie and with Daphne being their last meeting after, um, six plus years. So, um, you know, just number one, thank you both for your service to the city of Lacey, uh, you know, as, as volunteers and, you know, um, you know, taking all, all the time you have. It really means a lot to, to us as staff to have kind of your guidance along the way. And you've been, been both very productive members. And got just a, a list here of different things that, that you all have worked on throughout the years. So I want to kind of go through that and, um, yeah, uh, you know, I, more to come. Well, we'll, you'll actually get invited to a city council meeting coming up where they will, the city council will, you know, formally acknowledge your, your service. But, um, so Eddie, uh, Eddie started the first meeting September eighteenth of twenty eighteen and Daphne was April second of twenty nineteen. Um, and so at that time we were just wrapping up our pedestrian bicycle plan. So I know Eddie has a very, you know, um, high interest in transportation, specifically pedestrian bicycle. So Eddie was definitely very, um, a, a good contributor to that plan. Um, and then on, on the back of that, we started into a session on kind of homelessness and housing, and that created a lot of public outcry. Something that unfortunately was never adopted, but we spent a lot of time and effort on it. And, um, Daphne, I certainly appreciate all your feedback on, on housing, um, especially your interest in getting more kind of affordable homeownership opportunities. And unfortunately, we were never able to quite solve that issue.
But you kept talking about it.
Yeah, we kept talking about, we'll keep working on it. Uh, we did a major overhaul to our shoreline master program, uh, with an update there. Uh, we did an update to our urban forest management plan. We worked on our various climate initiatives and adopted the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Um, updated our stormwater plans and codes, a major overhaul to our capital facilities plan. Um, a recent update to the neighborhood commercial zones, which was a, a, a heavy lift from the planning commission, and we certainly appreciate your efforts on all of that. And then, um, you know, you have been involved in our comprehensive plan update to date. Unfortunately, you won't be able to participate as a, as a part of the planning commission, um, in this update as we continue through the next year to, to go through this process. But would certainly, you know, appreciate your involvement as private citizens to help support the efforts in, in getting the, the comp plan update, um, pushed across the, the finish line. So again, thank you both for your time. We really appreciate it. And, uh, on behalf of the staff, you know, again, thank you. Um, I did want to mention one other thing which is related to your vacancies. We did, uh, I sat in interviews with the, the mayor and with Chair Gadman at, um, this last week to review, uh, and interview, uh, candidates for the planning commission. And, uh, we did get two that are going to be nominated at that, uh, December seventeenth meeting. So their first meeting will be the first meeting in January. So looking forward to getting a couple of really good, um, new faces on the planning commission that seem really excited to be involved. So, um, so, yeah, we'll, we'll not have any lag in any members. So we'll be back right up to nine members, uh, right away. Unfortunately, um, with Daphne, we're the UGA member. We're, we're actually just going to have one UGA member. These folks are both from the city limits. So, um, we'll try in that, in that next round when we do have a, a, a eventual vacancy to fill again to try to get a UGA member. So, um, if you, anybody knows anybody that lives in the urban growth area that wants to be involved, let me know and I can get them the application. So the next time that vacancy comes around that they can apply. So. With that, seeing to my report.
All right. Moving on to new business, comprehensive plan update.
Yeah. So obviously we have a lot of people in the room tonight. We have a, a lot of presentations to give to you tonight, um, and a lot of information. So, um, thanks for bearing with us. This, this will be probably a lengthy meeting, but good news is you don't have to come back on, uh, Christmas Day. We're going to cancel that meeting. Um, so, uh, number one, we wanted to give you kind of an overview and what I'm going to do is give you an overview of the comprehensive plan update process and some of the timelines that are coming up. Hans is going to go through the, uh, the results of the public outreach that we've done to date. Um, and then we're going to go through the legal requirements, the vision themes and goals for establishing three different elements of our comprehensive plan. Uh, climate element, transportation and housing elements. And so we're going to have the kind of various staff and consultants that are associated with updating each one of those elements, give a little presentation. Um, my request to the planning commission, we're going to, we're going to be throwing a lot of information at you tonight. Um, but we'll also have some opportunity for, for questions or for comments. So my request is, is that you hear the presentation from the, the group and then afterwards we'll go around, um, and see if anybody has any questions. So we can get through all the presentations that we have tonight. So, uh, I don't want to just totally go through the, the staff report. I, I hope you all had a chance to, to read it, but, um, just kind of hits the key points of what we've been doing related to our comprehensive plan update process over the last year. Um, as you may remember, this started with some visioning exercises that we did with you all. Uh, earlier this year, we also did that with the city council and the, and the, uh, youth council as well, uh, which started to establish some, some key themes. Um, and then ultimately, uh, gave us a, a little bit more information about what some of the, the engagement priorities were in, in engaging with our, our community. So Hans is going to go through kind of what the, um, the community has, has told us. Um, essentially what I wanted to mention as part of our community engagement plan is that there has, there have been or will be a total of four phases. And right now we are actually moving into essentially the third phase. So those four phases are visioning, uh, which we've done. I mentioned community priorities, which is really talking to the community about what their priorities are. And, and you'll see that in the, the survey results. Drafting the plan and the final plan. And so what we're doing tonight is actually setting the stage for drafting the plan. So we're actually going to go through and make sure that we're on the right track with the planning commission as far as your kind of vision for what the comp plan is going to be looking like. So when we're actually doing the synthesis of the plan, you're kind of in lockstep with what the staff is producing. Um, let's see. So, uh, vis- related to the kind of the visioning and the goals, um, there, as I mentioned, there are several elements that we're going to go over tonight that are at a high level articulate the vision of the community, which is also reflected in other documents like our utilities plans, our capital facilities plans and those kinds of things. Um, but specifically tonight, we're going to talk about climate, transportation and housing, going through the, the state legislative requirements for each, as well as some of the vision. Um, we are kind of the farthest along, I'll say, in the climate element, which you'll hear more about tonight. And I did include in your packet some of the, some of the products that are coming out of the, the climate element. Um, so kind of, before I turn it over to Hans, I did want to talk a little bit about, um, confirming the overall goals of the update. And I did provide this in the staff report, which is goals around the actual comprehensive plan document itself. And so that's number one, a readable and usable comprehensive plan that reflects the, the public's vision. An, an integrated and relatable, uh, document from element to element. It's a, it's streamlined with a goal of simplifying zoning and development standards that can be achieved at a, a future, uh, through future docket cycles and that we meet the GMA requirements and all new laws. And so, um, at the end, we'll, we'll confirm with you that we're on the right track when we get to the point of, of moving the actual, uh, document forward. So, um, I did include in your packets a calendar. Um, and so you'll see some of those, those dates that we will be coming to the planning commission coming up in twenty twenty-five with the, the comprehensive plan. But I did want to mention, uh, two, two or three dates that will be coming up right after the first of the year. Um, number one is our January eighth planning commission, uh, meeting where we're going to be talking about land use. So one of the things you're, you'll make notice from the discussion tonight is we're kind of missing land use. We're going to come back in January and start going through our different land use options then. Um, February eleventh is actually the, the date of the joint council planning commission meeting. And so that's when we, um, as a planning commission, we'll be talking to the city council about the comprehensive plan update, that some of this information will be duplicative of what you're getting here tonight. Um, but it'll be a way to, to kind of bring the council along and what's been accomplished so far in the, in the comp plan update process. And then the next night, so mark your calendars. So February eleventh, which is a Tuesday, it's council meeting. So, um, I think it'll be a six o'clock time, the, the time there. We also, the next night would be typically a regular planning commission meeting, uh, but we're going to actually host an open house on the comp plan here in this room that night. So, um, that kind of expectation from the planning commission is that instead of attending the regular meeting that night, you'll be helping to host the open house and talking to your friends and neighbors that will be actually in this meeting about, um, comprehensive plan related, um, topics that night. So a good plan at this point is just, is kind of in flux, but at this point, I think we're looking at maybe having something kind of similar to what we did at, um, uh, Camacho Middle School with the neighborhood commercial, um, uh, update where we have various kind of booths or stations and they're hosted by people that can, uh, hold conversations as well. So more to come on that at this point, but February eleventh and twelfth, there are some important dates put in your calendar at this point. So. The rest of the calendar is there for your review. I'm not going to go through it in any detail other than to say our hope is and our goal is by the end of twenty twenty-five to have a fully updated and adopted, uh, comprehensive plan. So. With that, I'll turn it over to Hans to go through the public outreach.
All right. Um, so, yeah, some of this is going to be a little bit of a, uh, review of stuff that's already been presented. But I'm going to run through the survey that we launched, uh, halfway through twenty twenty-four and, uh, just high level uh, findings and feedback that we've, uh, gained from that, uh, to date. So, um, as far as the outreach efforts, uh, we attended a range of different events, including the South Sound BBQ Festival, Cops Cars and Kids, uh, Children's Day, Winter Fest, uh, Depot Holiday Night Market. Uh, we targeted these specific events because they were located within the community, but also they've been known to really draw the Lacey crowd. Uh, so our, our outreach efforts are really targeted towards that, uh, demographic, which was successful. Uh, and then we also did a range of different, uh, imprint and digital outreach, uh, through really all of our different formats and communication channels that we have available to us. So that includes the website, social media, different, uh, articles in local, uh, journals and newspapers. Uh, lots of different email distribution chains, also reaching out to other, uh, entities like the North Person School District, uh, to use their email chains as well, really just trying to use all of our different avenues to get the word out as much as possible. Uh, informing people about the comprehensive plan process, but then also driving them to the survey so that we can get that feedback, uh, at the front end. Uh, Wesley, our economic development coordinator, also went out to thirty-two different businesses within the community to help get the word out, uh, there as well. And then we also created a, uh, incentive of, we, uh, five different gifts, gift cards of a hundred dollars, uh, provided you participated in the survey and left some way for us to contact you at the end of that survey. Um, so we're going to be actually doing that drawing later on this month, uh, which we did see an uptick after we put that out there. So that was another helpful way to get a little bit more, uh, traction on the survey. Um, this is one of those kind of recap slides. I already presented this to you guys in, in some level before, but, uh, the feedback that we gained from the, the different events that we attended, uh, was a lot of in-person conversations. We did some different kind of idea, uh, boards and things like that. But really the, the primary discussion that we're having at these events is what do you care about or what's important to you? Or when thinking about Lacey, what, what, what matters is really what we're trying to get down to. And some of the top, uh, common themes that we heard throughout those conversations included things like increased connectivity, uh, year-round recreation, affordable homeownership and, uh, preservation of natural areas. Uh, those are common themes that we typically hear at a lot of the different engagement that we do, whether or not it's comprehensive plan focused or any other subjects. Uh, we've heard that a lot also within neighbor commercial districts for that outreach. But anytime that there's really that, uh, conversation taking place, a lot of these topics tend to come up. So these are a lot of, um, yeah, you kind of the usual suspects. And then as far as survey engagement, uh, so, uh, yeah, this is as of a couple of days ago when we kind of exported all these. So the survey is still live and we are going to run it and kind of taper it off towards the holidays. Um, just kind of as natural, uh, participation and submittals go down. Um, but we did sixteen different, uh, social media posts. Uh, those posts reached, those posts, uh, were viewed by over eight thousand people. Uh, and then of those eight thousand people, uh, there was some form of interaction, whether or not that was a like, a share, or, uh, clicking into that link and learning more about it. Um, and we had around five hundred and sixty of those. And then from all of that, we gained around three hundred and eighty-six survey participants, uh, that actually participated in that. And while that might seem like a lot of people that we reached versus how many people actually we got to that stage of providing feedback. Um, there's also an education element to that and an awareness element to that, which are also things that we, uh, value and are important. So it's kind of, it can be, uh, measured as far as just like, yes, you're aware that there's comprehensive planets out there and taking place. Uh, you're informed that it has to do with Lacey and it might have contained these subjects or these elements. And then the engaged is more like, I'm now providing feedback on that information now that I've been kind of informed about it. So all of those are valuable in different ways. Um, but that's just kind of a high level breakdown of what we had. And then within the survey, uh, one of the things that we like to do is ask demographic related questions. And one of the big reasons that we like to ask these questions is to ensure that we're reaching, uh, a good distribution of the community that's really kind of representative of our community as a whole. Uh, there's not necessarily an imbalance of one group or another, that their voice might be elevated above others disproportionately to what our community makeup is. Uh, so we ask a range of different demographic questions. Uh, we also asked a, uh, kind of, there was a mapping exercise involved where you could drop a pin in your general vicinity of where you live. Um, so we see that over on the right there too. So we do actually see a pretty good distribution of, uh, responses coming from across the community, uh, clumped in residential areas, which was encouraging. Um, but yeah, so, I mean, some of the metrics that we asked, so we asked how many people live in Lacey. Were eighty-eight percent of respondents actually identified as living in Lacey or the community, which is pretty solid. Uh, work in Lacey was a bit lower. Um, looking at the American Community Survey, we actually found that around seventy-eight percent of people commute more than fifteen minutes as part of their daily commute. And unless you're really driving from one end of Lacey to the other, that generally puts you outside of Lacey. So that's actually not far off from what we'd expect there. Um, and then we asked some, uh, demographic related questions. So, um, and then also gender related questions, age, uh, household income, uh, and then uh, how long you've been or they've been, uh, a resident of Lacey, uh, to kind of get us back from there. We also did get a good representation from people that were in that one to two, two to three year range as well. So it was, it was good to see that all in all, these pretty well lined up with and we're within a few percentage points of, uh, actually the makeup of Lacey. So that was all very encouraging to see. Um, one of the things that we, one of the reasons that we also asked this is to see if we are missing the mark anywhere. And one of the areas where that did show up was actually when it, uh, looking at the renter versus homeowner demographics. Um, so within Lacey, depending on what source you look at, around forty-two point eight percent, uh, of the population is, uh, a renter. Um, and within our survey, we were only getting about eighteen percent of respondents identifying as a renter. Um, so that was something that we wanted to elevate and prioritize as far as how do we get better representation from these groups? Um, so we actually went out to, and Jennifer actually did a huge amount of the lake work on this. Um, but she went out to twenty-eight, I believe, different, uh, multifamily destinations and actually put flyers out, uh, spoke with the community, uh, residents that live there, uh, went to the community and clubhouses, uh, did a significant amount of work there. And we also reached out to, uh, management a- agencies. Did a significant amount of work there and we also reached out to uh management agencies uh and used their email distribution to reach out to all of their different tenants. Uh getting the word out that way. And then we also actually, we can uh target our social media boosts towards different demographics. So we also uh prioritize renter uh populations as far as where those uh social media boosts are gonna go first. If that makes sense, so they'll show up more often on people that have somehow been identified as a renter. Um and through that process, we actually did see a bit of an uptake uptake. So about mid-November is when we started doing that kind of heavy push towards that. And we did see a bump from about eighteen point two to twenty-four point three percent respondents rate of being renters, so. It worked to some degree, but still uh short of where we'd like to be on that one. But it was encouraging to see that that representation was at least a little bit better. Um yeah, so then from there, that was kind of all of the metrics of who we heard from. Um and then two of the first questions that we asked had to do with quality of life and the future of Lacey and kind of visioning-oriented questions. What do you want to see in the future? What does that look like? Uh what what's your quality of life and how can it be improved? Those are, those are two of the early questions and really help us kind of set the stage for what uh the community's vision for the future is. Um the quality of life question, uh we had around two hundred and seventy-nine responses to date. Uh that took time to kind of provide pretty lengthy uh responses to these. And these responses aren't just like, this is my priority, they're a little bit more involved than that. So they might list three or four or five different subjects. Um but reviewing those for context, we kind of divided all the different feedback that we heard into six different buckets or categories of or themes. Uh that really seemed to rise to the top and show up consistently throughout the feedback that we heard. Uh those are public health, safety and social services, transportation network connectivity, affordable housing and urban development. Uh sustainable and environmental conservation, uh community identity amenities, engagement, and then economic growth and local businesses. And I did throw percentages next to these and we did a word cloud, it's hard to visually represent words, but this is kind of our best go of it. Um so those were the top six uh categories that we heard about when asking the community about quality of life. Uh we did turn around and then also followed up with that vision for the future. And one of the things that was interesting is that essentially they're the same categories. Um the quality of life today, but then also looking forward, the same topics and priorities are really remain the same uh throughout both of those discussions. Uh one thing that we did see shift pretty uh significantly in the visions of the future is actually transportation. Jump from the number two slot to the number one slot and actually over fifty percent of the people that provided feedback on this topic. Reference transportation in some capacity or another as part of their comments, so that was actually a very uh. Yeah, consistent topic throughout. Uh and then we also see a couple of the, I think, economic growth and community identity switch places, but other than that, I can toggle back and forth here. But that was a big one that really jumped out at least to me. So then looking a little bit deeper into uh what kind of sentiments or statements were said about each one of these themes. Uh starting first with the transportation, uh that one really had to do with network connectivity and walkability, walkability was said a lot. Um but it had to do with expanding sidewalks, bike lanes, pedestrian-friendly streets. Uh less traffic and congestion, uh lower speeds, better multimodal networks. And then concerns over sprawl and car-dependent development. And that one along with a lot of the feedback we heard could potentially show up in a couple of these different buckets or categories. Um and then I did include some quotes down, I'm not gonna read these because it's a lot. Um but these are kind of the types of quotes or sentiments directly from without kind of staff interpretation. Included to give you an idea of kind of what people were conveying. Uh the next one was public health, safety and social services. Uh this really had to do with uh things like calls for uh structured solutions such as such as shelters. Uh rehabilitation programs and additional law enforcement, uh mental health support, uh emergency services. And there seemed to be a pretty common uh suggested link within the comments that we saw between housing, mental health and crime. Uh in various different ways, but that was something that those topics seemed to show up together in the feedback that we heard. Uh and then I did include some quotes there as well, but I'm gonna skip through those. Uh affordable housing and urban development, that was another one. Um where there actually was definitely affordable housing, but there seemed to be a strong connection between that and development in general. Uh so that was how that category was created, but it had to do with uh diverse housing options. Uh including multifamily units and low-income housing, uh requests for cohesive uh and kind of beautiful was the word that. Uh it's picked here because the people were expressing concerns over the same kind of square rectangle of a building being flopped down over and over again. Uh identity uh of those buildings kind of really kind of creating a a Lacey. Form and function to to them instead of just, you could see that building anywhere in any community and not really know where it's from. Uh eco-friendly and then uh very vegetated or tree developments was another thing that kept coming up. And then again, there's some uh direct quotes that kind of exemplify each one of those. And then sustainability and environmental conservation. So this one uh placed a pretty large emphasis on uh trees. Trees is one of those things that we tend to hear about no matter uh what subject we're talking about or a question we're asking. Um so that was prominent throughout, but then also preserving natural habitats, focusing on renewable energy. Uh sustainable urban design, uh eco-friendly practices and prioritizing uh the minimization of environmental impacts within development. So recognizing that development, yes, we're in a city environment, but then doing that development in a way that's mindful of the environment surrounding it. And then moving into community identity amenities and engagement, this is another one that we pretty frequently hear, uh no matter what conversation we're having where. Is that um suggestions for creating a district that really identifies as Lacey. Um separate from neighboring cities, there's kind of a missing downtown experience. And there are a couple of different ways that this was phrased, but really kind of that center core. Uh we're working on that with kind of midtown as an example of that, but just having that identity or that central gathering place. Um was something that came out quite a bit and then also that kind of moving into that uh in indoor spaces. Uh for the type of type part of the year where outdoor recreation really isn't possible, where outdoor gatherings is less appealing. Having that indoor space that really kind of brings people together and has that community mix. Um yeah, and then also there were quite a few comments that had to do with that kind of younger demographics. So kids all the way through maybe eighteen, twenty-five, having spaces, destinations, activities. Uh for those age groups to really kind of be in Lacey and do fun things together. Economic growth and local businesses, uh requests for revitalizing commercial areas to make them more attractive and functional. And then concerns over uh larger corporations and uh larger developments overshadowing uh local development. Um our our warehouse district was called out a couple of times within this conversation uh as kind of an example of that. Um and then, yeah, that's actually all of them there. So then moving into next steps, uh I think we've shared this graphic with you guys before. Um but that first part where we went to council, went to you guys, went to youth council, asked about those kind of visioning questions. Uh started to do some of this outreach, that was all kind of in that summer fall twenty uh twenty-four category. But now we've kind of moved into the community priorities, so that's where we've done this big first round of feedback. We've collected all its responses and now we take the time to actually dig through it and kind of extract meaning and figure out what people are trying to tell us. So that's in the phase where we are right now. And then moving into uh early two thousand twenty-five is where we're gonna actually have that open house. Where part of that open house that we present is all of the findings that we've had from the survey. Uh and then let folks from the community tell us if we heard them correctly, if what we're kind of reflecting as the findings of the survey are accurate. So we have that kind of sounding board as we're moving forward to confirm that we're on the right track. Um and I believe Ryan already ran through this list a little bit, but I did just want to throw it up on the screen so everybody could see. As far as the next kind of three events that we're gonna be doing that are comprehensive plan-focused and oriented. Uh there's that January eighth work session, we're gonna be looking at land use, so we're not really talking too much about that this evening. Uh and then the joint meeting that Ryan referenced and then the community house, open house the day after. Uh all of which are gonna take place in this room. Oh yeah, I think that is it for me. Any, any questions on that one so far? Looks like Spencer may have raised his hand.
Yeah, I'm wondering if you could send us a copy of that presentation.
I definitely can.
Yeah, we'll, we'll package up all the presentations for tonight, it'll be kind of a little bit of death by PowerPoint, so we'll, we'll make sure to send all that to you guys. I think there'll be four different pre- presentations tonight, so we'll package it all up and get it to you uh tomorrow probably.
Thank you.
I will say also, when we move farther into this, we'll have a a lot more kind of in-depth analysis of all the different survey responses, including the raw data. So you can read through it to your heart's content, but there's, there's a lot of it out there, so try to distill it down a little bit for you.
I could use some sleeping material.
There you go.
I wanna assume, don't want to assume just because I don't have questions, but do we need to go through, does? Yeah, we can do that. Eddie, do you have any questions?
Uh no, I'm good.
Judy? Elliot? Tanya? And Spencer, anything else? Okay, we're good.
All right, well, thank you.
Thanks, Hans. So uh next on the docket, we're, we'll go a little bit into the climate and climate resiliency sub-element. So um just give us a second, we'll pull up that presentation and then Hans and Lindsay can switch spots here, so.
So we'll follow the same M O presentation and go for questions?
Yep, yep, it'll be a familiar theme throughout.
All right.
Then go to the zooms and hit share screen. And then now you can start us.
Awesome, all right. Technical difficulties have been worked out. Uh I'm Lindsay Fields, the Climate Sustainability Coordinator for the City of Lacey. We also have uh Ron and Robin with us from Ramey Associates. Um and they'll introduce themselves when they come on. Um they have the second part of this presentation as they are working through and on our climate resilience sub-element. Which is one part of our new climate element that's mandated by the state. Excellent. Uh so HB eleven eighty-one, climate planning, um it was, oh, don't do this, Lindsay. Sorry. Awesome, okay. The climate planning um legislation that passed last year mandated that all counties and cities. Uh I think above a particular population size, but I think it's like six thousand or something. Is required to uh create a climate element in some capacity. And so there's a lot of language around how that, how that works. But essentially what it comes down to is two sub-elements, a greenhouse gas reduction sub-element. And then also a climate resilience sub-element. And so all cities and counties, as we go through this process, are now required to um update these. And and some of the goals of that are to reduce sprawl, encourage multimodal transportation systems. And so there's a lot in HB eleven eighty-one that has to speak to transportation, to land use. Uh reduce vehicle miles traveled is a really big goal of the HB eleven eighty-one. Um and reducing greenhouse gas emissions, uh retain open space. Yeah, oh, we could. Uh retain open space and enhance those spaces and then plan for climate resiliency. And so the climate element uh for the mandate from HB eleven eighty-one, the city will create a new climate element, which is those two sub-elements we just talked about. And so I'm working on the greenhouse gas emissions reduction sub-element. Um it it requires a a little bit less of a heavy lift for us because we adopted in two thousand twenty-one that there's a climate mitigation plan into our thin. Um standing comprehensive plan and we've also done a lot of work around that plan. And so we're really using that plan itself as a basis and a foundation for our work in the greenhouse gas development. The climate resiliency sub-element uh requires a little bit more work because it's a little bit different, as I'll get into my next slide. When we talk about adaptation versus mitigation. And so the climate, uh the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Um really is kind of synonymous with greenhouse gas reductions, which is that sub-element. So we're talking about mitigating the emissions that we're currently um putting out there, reducing those, and that's what that sub-element is talking about. Um and so actions or changes in societal behavior um or with cities that that um reduce or eliminate greenhouse gas emissions. Um and then the adaptation side is that climate resiliency sub-element side. So um in the event that we do not mitigate our um greenhouse gas emissions um to the levels that we need to. Obviously, there's some ramifications for that for globally, but also locally. Um for how that affects smoke, fires, um rain patterns and um things like that. And so that's how we're gonna adapt to those, that that changing environment. And so those are a variety of actions that are meant to reduce or compensate for or adapt to the adverse impacts that arise from changes in the earth's climate. And so that's really the climate resilience side, so how are we gonna be resilient to these changes in the event that we don't reduce our greenhouse gas emissions to the levels that we need? Um the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, um in two thousand nine, so some background, uh Lacey's been doing this work for a while. And actually, the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan um was built on a few different plans or or used those plans as a basis. There's a, I think, a sustainability plan from Olympia. Um there's also the two thousand nine, uh when Lacey completed the Carbon Reduction Resiliency Plan. Um that all was also used as a basis for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Um and then the two thousand thirteen TRC adopted Sustainable Thurston, which set a priority goal for Thurston region to move toward carbon neutrality. And identified uh find resources to work on climate change as the first action set, which are, we did with the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Um and the carbon neutrality is a a an important term because um we'll be using that goal. So in terms of the sub-element, the Thurston um Climate Mitigation Plan, the TCMP. Goals don't currently align with state goals, that's because we are kind of ahead of the state in setting goals for ourselves. Uh and so those goals actually uh mandate that we be carbon neutral by two thousand fifty. Um the TCMP says that we'll be like eighty-five percent below two thousand fifteen levels by two thousand fifty. Um so there's some working that we have to do in the this greenhouse gas sub-element to sort of align the city goals with those state goals of carbon neutrality. The sub-element requirements, so requirement one is that we um is a result in reductions in overall greenhouse gas emissions generated by transportation and land use within the jurisdiction. But without increasing emissions elsewhere in Washington, so that would just um like um. You know, i- if we had new industry or something coming into Lacey in the next ten years that we needed to account for, like AI technology or something. Um which could, you know, increase emissions elsewhere, um which isn't really a concern for Lacey. Um we don't have any AI generating power plants coming to Lacey, so we don't really need to worry about that or any other sort of industries like that. Um but we do need to reduce our um greenhouse gas emissions for transportation and land use. The tricky thing is greenhouse gas emissions don't, especially in Thurston County. Um it's really, it can be really difficult to differentiate between Olympia's emissions and Lacey's emissions and Thurston and some other. We're all in each other's cities, our, you know, our community members travel Olympia, vice versa. Um and so we'll be using the two thousand twenty-two Thurston County greenhouse gas inventory. So it won't be Lacey-specific, but it's Thurston County-specific, and so just a note for that. Um uh requirement two is that it results in reductions in per capita vehicle miles traveled. Uh and so there's a a big part of this HB eleven eighty-one is that we reduce vehicle miles traveled per capita um for the city of Lacey. And like Hans mentioned, a lot of folks travel outside the city uh to go to work. And so we do have some plans in place, but there's some more work we could do to um to reduce those vehicle miles travel. Uh and then the requirement three is to prioritize reductions that benefit overburdened communities in order to maximize the co-benefits of reduced air pollution and en- environmental justice. And so um a big part of the climate resilience sub-element two that uh Ron and Robin will get into is is around um. Communities within Lacey that are gonna be impacted the heaviest and the first by obviously climate change and the adaptation side. But also currently um reducing greenhouse gas emissions and um reducing the burden of those communities to go green. Um is a big part of that, so you know, EV charging and how can we make EV charging more affordable or or can we? Or transportation, right, how do we get on-time, fast transportation in Lacey that's dependable enough? Um to all the areas of the city that we need, particularly low and moderate income households or multifamily. And so those are some, some things that um this uh sub-element is required to do some of the the goals. So we did have to develop an inter-departmental climate team as part of this, which was really great. Um and we've kind of pulled in folks from all different aspects of the city. Um obviously, public works and transportation and engineers we pulled in. Uh but we also have uh uh the city manager's office on board, um some more folks in community economic development like um gin and housing. And then parks and recreation, um the facilities, because there is some um work to do around um just decarbonization of our own, own buildings ourselves. Um and then emergency management because the climate resiliency. Um, and then emergency management because the climate resiliency, um, portion touches so heavily on the hazard mitigation plan, um, and how those intersect, so we have. Um, and, and so, yeah, it's the first time I think the city departments are all working together internally on some of these issues around climate, climate change and climate resiliency, so it's exciting. Uh, the greenhouse inventory from two thousand twenty-two, so this is, um, it, it could be confusing. So Commerce is actually creating greenhouse gas inventories for five of the largest counties, I think, in Washington. But this is the greenhouse gas inventory that we most recently did through the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. And so it requires us every three to five years to update the greenhouse gas inventory. And because the way, uh, the way emissions work, it's really hard to get last year's data, so it's typically two years behind, which is why it's twenty twenty-two. Um, and so, n- shocker, uh, not shocker, buildings and energy are our number one in greenhouse gas emissions in the area. Um, residential use being, um, one of the higher ones. And then, uh, which actually increased a little bit and the numbers changed, but transportation is the second largest, uh, greenhouse gas emissions in our area. And then the smaller ones, water, wastewater, agriculture, um, those definitely happen, uh, at least at the agriculture sector, we're talking more like Thurston County broadly. Uh, the TCMP goals, so this is what we talked about. So, um, these goals will have to be updated, um, in order to adopt, um, the greenhouse gas sub-element into our comp plan. And so that'll be, um, actually it'll be extra goal, so we'll be aiming for net neutrality by twenty fifty. Um, and then I think it's something like forty percent below nineteen ninety levels for twenty thirty. Um, but as you can see, we're not currently meeting our current goals. Uh, there's a lot, we're definitely rolling out programs and, and, um, working with folks to reduce our greenhouse, um, gas footprint, but there's a lot of work to do. Um, and so, yep, these are some of the reduction goals. Oh, I have a slide on it. I didn't have to remember it, but I did. Um, and so the, yep, so the state's greenhouse gas goals, um, are to by twenty thirty, forty-five percent below nineteen ninety levels. And then by twenty forty, uh, seventy percent below nineteen ninety, uh, levels. And then twenty fifty, ninety percent below, um, and achieve net zero emi- emissions. So, um, those are, these are the goals that we will most likely be adopting and moving forward with our comp plan. Uh, so what we have, um, next to do, we've done a lot of the climate resiliency work. Um, and then now we need to get started on the greenhouse gas sub-element work coming into twenty twenty-five, um, is we need to, um, update TCMP goals that align with the state's mandatory goals like I talked about. We need to utilize the TCMP and the actions to reach target goals. So, uh, figuring out which actions in the plan will get us there, which is really targeting residential energy use and transportation goals. Um, and then present the data, uh, results, so the data of the greenhouse gas inventory to the community, um, and with those goals as well, and then get their feedback on those. Um, so, uh, that'll most likely happen in February when we do our open house. And then utilize our internal staff team and climate staff team to integrate these into the plan itself. So that's when we really start building the, this, the sub-element, um, uh, or we start building these, um, these goals and plans into other parts of our plan as well, since we mo- most likely will have a much more dynamic comp plan this year, um, where a lot of goals are across the different sectors, and so we'll start, um, integrating those into the plan. Um, I think with that, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, and I'm going to do. How can I do this? Where it's. So I'm just trying to, uh.
If you go down. What do you want?
Uh, I just want it to be like.
She's talking, just do the one single box.
Yeah, okay, we'll do that. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Ron and Robin for this part, and I will continue to operate the slides for you.
All right, thank you very much, Lindsay, and good evening, commissioners. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, well, thank you for having us this evening. My name is Ron Whitmore. I'm a principal with Ramey and Associates. Ramey and Associates is working with the city staff and the climate team to prepare the resilient sub-element, as Lindsay mentioned. Um, just a little bit about myself, I've been working in community sustainability for over thirty years across all sectors, including thirteen years as a long-range planner and sustainability director in local government. Um, for Ramey and Associates, I've been managing a mix of both comprehensive plan updates and climate plans. Next slide, please. Um, a little bit about Ramey and our team. Um, Ramey and Associates is a mission-driven firm, uh, that works across the western region of the U S. We have a diverse portfolio of planning, research, and evaluation projects, including comprehensive plans, greenhouse gas and climate adaptation plans, environmental justice plans, urban design projects, and code updates. And we very much pride ourselves in being nimble and collaborative. I've got to say that, uh, the staff with the City of Lacey have made that really easy. Um, Ryan, Lindsay, and, uh, the broader climate team at the city has been really great to work with and very easy to work with. And we're very impressed so far with the level of collaboration across the city. Um, I have the pleasure of working with Robin Wong and Megan McNulty on the Lacey resilience sub-element. Robin is one of our climate adaptation and resilience team leads and also works on many greenhouse gas reduction plans. Megan is based in the Northwest and is one of our comprehensive plan policy leads. I am now going to turn it over to Robin, who will provide an overview of our work with the city and some of the work completed in progress and that is coming soon.
All right, thanks, Ron. Um, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, good evening, commissioners. I'm Robin Wong, and I'm going to give our overview of the resilient sub-element. Uh, next slide. Um, as Lindsay explained previously, the resilient sub-element recognizes that the impacts of climate change are already occurring, um, and they're actually projected to get worse over time. So the purpose of the resilient sub-element is to increase the ability of human communities, infrastructural assets, and ecological systems to avoid and or reduce the impacts of those climate-related natural hazards, which, um, can include extreme heat, wildfires, wildfire smoke, and severe storms, among others. Um, and because climate change disproportionately harms populations that have social vulnerabilities and have environmental inequities in their lives, a key priority for us is to address the impacts of climate change on those overburdened communities. Uh, next slide. Uh, we're really focused on making this resilient sub-element visionary, but also implementable. So to do so, our first phase is a robust technical analysis so that we can understand the work that the city has already done. Uh, we really want to capitalize on the city's successes, ensure consistency, and fill any policy gaps that there may be. And in this phase, we are also conducting an assessment of the vulnerabilities and the risks posed by climate hazards to the people and the assets in the community. Uh, and then based on this analysis, we'll develop the framework of adaptation and resilience policies, which comprise the foundation of the sub-element. And then we'll craft the actual text of the comprehensive plan amendments. Um, at that point, we'll also identify the places in the city codes that need to be amended so that the city is positioned to implement the resilient sub-element policies post-adoption. Um, and lastly, with multiple comprehensive plan elements being updated at the same time, uh, we're working closely with city staff, M I G, and friend peers to align our engagement and our deliverables. Next slide. We kicked off our project in September of this year. Um, and our work to date has really been on those foundational tasks, but we are moving into the policy frameworks in the beginning of next year. Uh, we have already conducted some of the public engagement through our listening sessions, and will also be participating in the February community workshop with the rest of the comp plan elements. Uh, the anticipated completion of our work on the public draft of the sub-element as well as the code audit is for June of next year. And then from there, the city staff will proceed with the adoption process with the rest of the comp plan elements. Next slide. Uh, now I'll provide an overview of the work that we've completed to date. Next slide. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, we complete two foundational sets of analyses so that we can develop an implementable plan. Uh, so this first one is the plan and policy audit, which we provided a summary of in your packet. And that one gives us an understanding of the city's policy landscape. We reviewed eight plans, including all the elements of the old comp plan, um, the county hazard mitigation plan, the city annex, as well as other plans related to infrastructure and facilities. Um, and through this analysis, we found that the city already has a lot of policies from these existing plans, uh, which should be consolidated into the resilient sub-element. Um, and some areas that we intend to strengthen through our work are policies related to heat and wildfire, as well as prioritizing measures that increase the resilience of vulnerable communities. Next slide. Uh, to develop our sub-element policies, we also need to know what the impacts of climate change, uh, will be in Lacey on, uh, in Lacey's communities, infrastructure, and natural assets. Uh, so we're conducting our assessment using the best available climate data from the University of Washington, um, and also examining the impacts that specifically affect vulnerable populations. Uh, climate hazards that we have learned so far are a major concern for Lacey, um, include extreme heat events, extreme storms and wind events, and wildfire smoke. Next slide. We've also identified some social vulnerabilities and Lacey-specific built environment vulnerabilities that we want to focus on throughout our policy development. Um, key factors that increase residents' vulnerability to climate change include age, income, uh, renter status, and language access. And a really important built environment factor, which we've heard particularly in the context of the heat dome events in the past few years, include, um, the lack of air conditioning in most of the homes in Lacey. Next slide. We're supporting our technical analysis by holding listening sessions with community stakeholders. Um, these sessions are a really important source of local knowledge, and this helps us understand how people experience the impacts of climate change, uh, in both their regular day-to-day lives and their work. Um, so we've already completed some of those sessions, um, with realtors and climate advocates. We also have, um, one upcoming with organizations representing vulnerable populations. Um, and these, um, these aren't the end of our engagement with these folks, though. Uh, we anticipate having an ongoing dialogue with these community members and others, um, with different perspectives throughout the project. And also through, um, the other engagement that is going on with the rest of the comp plan. Uh, so now I'll pass it over to Ron to go over our next steps.
Thank you, Robin. Um, the Planning Commission, as Hans already mentioned, and the City Council are important partners in this process. So we did want to give you a quick preview of what's to come. Next slide, please. Um, as Robin noted, we will soon transition from analysis to policy writing. Specifically, we look forward to discussing the draft policy framework with you in February and March. That framework will identify the goals and policies that will serve as the foundation for the resilient sub-element. Then later in the spring, we'll seek your input on the draft sub-element itself. Um, and then, as Robin mentioned, the city will take, uh, the plan along with the other elements through the remainder of the public review and adoption process, um, through there and through the end of twenty twenty-five. Um, that's it for our presentation this evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to introduce our work. And now we'll turn it back over to, uh, Lindsay and Ryan.
So, yeah, we'll turn it over to the Planning Commission to ask any questions, um, as well as, um, we'll be happy to take any comments or concerns about kind of, you know, obviously, a lot of this is required work. So, you know, what you heard was there's, you know, obviously, community priorities about, um, climate change, resiliency, but, you know, the reason we're doing this is because we're required to do it now by this, by the state of Washington. So number one, I, we're here, here to and happy to answer any questions, but also, you know, want to have any discussion, you, you know, about themes and goals that we could integrate into the comp plan that maybe you haven't, haven't seen in, in this presentation here tonight.
Eddie, you have a question?
No.
Judy?
I do not, thank you.
I was curious about new construction expectations. Are air conditioning units and like heat pumps and stuff, is that something that's a required element of newer construction?
It's not required, um, but we do this, so the Wash- Washington State has one of the most stringent energy codes in the nation. So, um, and as part of that, there are, um, requirements around heating and cooling and the efficiencies of those units. And as well as credits, you, you have to, when you build a, a house in Lacey, you have to have a certain number of credits to be able to get your permit. And credits can be, um, energy-efficient windows, or they can be a heat pump, or they can be. So it's, it's a menu of different options. While a air conditioner or a heat pump is not necessarily required, a lot of them get installed in new construction because they do, they're more efficient than like furnaces or gas, gas furnaces. Um, and so they, they tend to get more credits for the energy code. So we see, seem to see that more in new construction because they do qualify for more energy code credits.
Elliot, do you have questions? Elliot, no? No? Spencer?
Not at this moment. I think I need to see some more in-depth information before I can ask pointed questions. Thank you.
Tanya?
I just had a question, like with, um, you know, marrying the transportation piece and, um, some of, um, what that does. Has the city considered any, um, I know like of Amazon and the company I work with, a lot of discussion about getting employees back into the offices, which is going to increase this transportation. Would the city offer any kind of tax advantages or incentives to stop that work? You know, stop, um, employers from asking their employees to come back into the office, uh, give them some incentive and let them stay home.
Yeah, that would be, um, that'd be like, more like a program implementation that comes from the comp plan. So, uh, we also have our, um, our commute reduction plan, um, which really is mostly like how the city employees reduce their commute re- reduction, but we can add on to that how we help businesses, um, in the city reduce commute. Um, so potentially, uh, something like that could come down the pipe. Um, but the, the plan for, or the goal for us would be to get something about reducing trips reductions into the comp plan. So then we can use that as a basis for a program that we, um, build later.
Gets into these kind of philosophical questions about how, how much interaction does the city have in operations of, of private businesses, right? So you, you get a little bit of that. Um, but what I did want to bring up was, Lindsay, do you want to maybe just hit the high points on the Energize Thurston campaign that's going on?
Yeah.
So we're really, uh, right now focused a lot on this kind of building energy kind of component of it. So as you saw the pie chart, you know, a part of it's transportation, but we're also focusing on the building side of it. Do you want to talk about?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. I think it's a great opportunity to like, understand, like, you know, we've had an environmental element for a long time in our comp plan. We had, um, the C R two plan, and then the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan and, uh, Sustainable Thurston. Uh, for me, it's a really good opportunity to know, to showcase like how plans become programs. And so like how we actually, you know, help folks. Um, we say we want to, we have this goal, but how do we help folks get to that goal? And so the Energize Thurston campaign, um, will launch March of twenty twenty-five. It's a, um, it's a fully subsidized and group purchase discount, um, for heat pumps, heat pump water heaters. And, um, we're using, uh, grant money for it as well. So we, we have, the City of Lacey itself has over half a million dollars to use for the program. Um, we'll be fully subsidizing, um, heat pump and heat pump water heater installations for, um, residents of the City of Lacey who are at eighty percent A M I or below. Um, and then if you have, uh, if you're at A M I eighty percent to, I think, one twenty, um, potentially subsidize it except for all but like twenty-five hundred of the cost. Um, and that includes installing it, the purchase of the equipment, um, and some electrical work if, if your home requires that you, um, get that completed before they can install it. It'll also include some critical home repair through Habitat for Humanity for low-income folks. So if you have broken windows, they're going to replace those before they put a heat pump in. Um, and so we're really just getting at that, this is our largest greenhouse gas source, uh, and, and so how do we reduce that? Well, let's help folks as much as we can, um, electrify.
What about, uh, multifamily homes for renters?
Yeah, so right now, um, it's only homeowners, but this is our pilot program. And so part of that is, what's really great is because we got federal funding through the Inflation Reduction Act, and because we're working with Olympia and Thurston, who also got, um, that same money, it's, uh, called E E C B G funding. And so because we got that, we were actually, um, at no cost. Um, we applied and got a fellow through the federal government, and so they're working at Thurston County right now. And quite, almost all their time is going into this. And so part of that is how do we expand this to multifamily? Um, it might look like something like, um, a, uh, purchasing a, um, a portable heat pump, uh, but the technology needs to catch up just a little bit on that, um, to be more efficient. And so. And so, yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to think through how we offer this to larger multifamily units, to duplexes, to. Um, right now, I think there's some stipulations around. I think maybe duplexes we will, um, but like more than fourplexes maybe not. So, yeah. Awesome. Thank you.
So this point, uh, we'll transition to transportation. Ask Martin if you want to go, or if it's just going to be the Stephen Show?
Alright, I'm Stephen Goodsell. Uh, this is Dan Gruyersky over here, sit behind you. Um, we're with Theron Peers.
So the easiest thing, the easiest thing to do is just hit the share button on the Zoom, Stephen.
Okay.
Yep, go down to the bottom and then um. Yeah, which one is it? Might be down, scroll down a little bit.
Oh, yeah. There we go.
And Stephen and I are both located in the Tacoma office of Parrot.
Yep, and we're transportation consultants. We do a lot of work helping communities plan, uh, long-range planning for transportation. We work on comprehensive plan transportation elements a lot, especially recently with all the comp plan update cycles that we're going through. Um, so we're excited to be working with the city of Lacey on this.
Let's go ahead and start the presentation and go up to the top where this little play button up above. Yeah, there you go. You got it.
Uh, yes, today we're going to cover some of the requirements. We've already heard about House Bill eleven eighty-one. Uh, we've also. We're going to talk more about that in depth. Uh, we're going to talk about some of the other things that are required of the transportation element specifically for this. And update. We're going to talk about some of the transportation themes or things that we typically talk about in a transportation element. And we're going to look back to the previous transportation plans that the city has done. Um, we're going to build off of those previous plans as much as we can for this comprehensive plan update. And at the end, we want to get your feedback on themes that you want to hear in the transportation element. Based off of our discussion and presentation today. And then we'll give a brief update on our status for the project. So transportation elements are made up of lots of different pieces. And these are just a handful of them thrown on the slide. Uh, it's really busy, won't get them. So all of them for the sake of time, uh, but we do talk about land use and climate a little bit. They're just, they're interrelated. So there's no way of getting around talking about all of them together. Um, we do look at the effects of those. Of land use assumptions and future land use um. allocations and that, that impact on the transportation network. We also talk about how the communities getting involved, what, what they've had to say about transportation in Lacey. We'll, we'll talk about multimodal transportation and how the city can incorporate that. Um, and then we also need to consider other things like ADA transition plans or Americans with Disabilities Act transition planning. So. So we've got New Growth Management Act requirements. We've already talked about HB eleven eighty-one. Thank you. Uh, we are also getting a little bit ahead on the housing, um, the House Bill's eleven ten. And thirteen thirty-seven, which talk about middle housing and accessory dwelling units. We're just going to briefly touch on those for the next presentation. So HPD eleven eighty-one uh, has a requirement or it's really just a new term. Uh, for pedestrian bicycle facilities or moving towards saying active transportation facilities. And the requirement is on top of that, that we talk about active transporti- transportation facilities. In our existing conditions reporting. So what is the current state of active transportation in the city of Lacey? And we'll, we'll cover that as part of the plan. We also need to talk about multimodal planning or how are we going to incorporate different modes of transportation? As part of the plan, vehicles, bicyclists, pedestrians, so on. And forgive me, I didn't look at the time I started. So we also need to talk about multimodal level of service as part of this planning. Or how do we measure how well we're serving different mode users? Instead of previously where it was primarily vehicle-based, how well are intersections or corridors serving vehicles? We want to look a little bit broader at all modes of transportation. It's part of this requirement from the House Bill. And specifically facilities that provide the greatest bet- safety benefit to each category. Uh, roadway users should be prioritized in the end when we look at our projects for the next twenty years. What, what specifically is going to benefit safety for all users? Uh, we've talked a little bit about the climate-related metrics. Uh, we've got GHG emissions and vehicle miles traveled. Uh, vehicle miles traveled is a measure of how many miles are traveled by people using vehicles. So take everyone's trip or commute from the city of Lacey and add all those miles together and that's your VMT. And the requirement from this House Bill is that we have policies in place that aim to reduce VMT. Over the next twenty years or so. So this is a table from WashDOT. It shows the strategies that we can use to reduce VMT over time. You can see that land use is the most effective. It just kind of makes sense. If you put jobs close to housing. You're going to reduce the distance that people need to travel to get places. Uh, but we can also talk about some other transportation-specific improvements or policies. Uh, that can help reduce the reliance on people getting from point A to point B using their vehicle. And, or shortening distances, so, or the way they travel. Another requirement, like I mentioned a minute ago, is ADA transition planning. We need to, the city already has an ADA transition plan. And pretty much this House Bill is just saying you need to make sure it's up to date. And so if you didn't have one, then we have to go in and do a full ADA transition plan. Uh, we also have to talk about state facilities and specifically your funding. Must include a discussion of how funds will be raised to address identified needs of the transportation system, including state-owned facilities. And HB eleven ten and HB thirteen thirty-seven are the housing, House Bill updates directed towards the housing element. But we need to analyze uh, three land use al- future land use alternatives. And their effect on the transportation system. So we might have one that's kind of based on. If you don't build anything or you don't change your city zoning for over the next twenty years, what is that going to look like on your transportation network? And then we'll have a couple of other different land use alternatives, which I'm sure we talked about uh, in the future. And then we're going to be using TRPC's travel demand model to help us measure those impacts.
So we'll just mention real quick, Stephen, while you go to the next slide, is that those other alternatives will be coming to you at that January eighth meeting. So you will be seeing kind of what the other kind of options are. Um, and um, and each one of those will be analyzed through a, a, a traffic. Or a transportation model to see what their impact on the transportation system will be. So that's what Stephen's referring to.
Thanks. Uh, for the sake of time, we won't dive into this checklist in depth. Um, just know that the Washington State Department of Commerce has a checklist for all the things that we need to include. At the comprehensive plan level, but also specifically for the transportation element. Um, and there's quite a few. It pretty, it's pretty much just a reflection of these House Bill updates. We have MMLOS or Multimodal Level of Service, Existing Conditions, Active Transportation, ADA Transition Planning, et cetera. And also a stipulation that it needs to be consistent with the regional transportation plan, in this case Thurston County Regional. Um, Planning Council's plan and they have a checklist as well. To make sure that we're in line with their RTP, with Regional Transportation Plan. And the only difference between those two checklists, between Commerce's and TRPC's, is that TRPC asks. Uh, how the city is making system improvements to reduce the number of traffic fatalities and serious injuries.
So one thing I'll mention to you on that, that slide, Stephen, is that this is new for transportation elements. Is that um, we actually have to go through a certification process now with TRPC. To make sure that we are consistent with the regional transportation plan, where we have not had to do that in the past. So this, that's a relatively new uh, requirement, um, that, so part of our update to this plan is to try to. Um, accomplish this by essentially the end of June because at that point, the, the new regional transportation plan will be put in place. And so our hope is that we're not having to adjust our comp plan based on a brand-new regional transportation plan. That's going to be adopted probably around the middle of the year. So just want to make the Planning Commission aware of that.
Great. So things that we want to talk about in the transportation element are transportation themes. These are things that we can talk about to address these requirements that we just went over from, from the House Bill updates for Commerce, et cetera. So talk about safety, talk about multimodal considerations, we can talk about congestion or traffic operations. And uh, we'll hi- we can highlight complete streets or how do we create a street scape that serves all modes? Uh, we also want to make sure that we're in a state of good repair, that we have some discussion about maintenance and keeping the existing infrastructure up to date. And then a discussion about sustainability and equity will be included as well. Um, so the city is, has a separate effort to do the Safety Action Plan for this uh, city of Lacey. So we're going to be pointing to that plan and just referencing that the city is working on those efforts.
That's one that will be coming to you soon too, is that we just got started on the Safety Action Plan with a different consultant. And we're just putting that together, so.
Yep, and so we'll, we'll try to highlight that that's happening and point to it in appendix most likely, um, to include it as part of this plan. And uh, we want to talk about, like I mentioned earlier, multimodal transportation. How are we going to discuss each mode of transportation, not just vehicles, but also including active transportation and transit? And then also the level of service for these modes. How do we talk about that? This is kind of an emerging field. Before, we just talked about vehicle level of service or what, how many seconds is a car waiting at an intersection? We'll give it a letter grade based off of how many seconds it's waiting there. Uh, we can talk about corridor travel time for vehicles. How long does it take someone in a car to get from here to here? And then that could be a measure of how well the road is serving uh, those users. Uh, but for these other modes, for pedestrians and bicyclists, we can start talking about. How, and something that's now required that we talk about is how well are we serving those modes? Uh, active transportations, transit, et cetera. So uh, a lot of the time we talk about connectivity. Uh, for the active transportation network, can someone get from point A to point B using a facility? Or is there no facility at all? We can also talk about the perceptions of safety or stress. We'll talk about this more in the next slide, but does someone feel comfortable using a facility? That's kind of one metric we can use to say, how well are we serving this mode? Uh, for transit, we can just talk about whether the service is present at all. We can also talk about headways or how. How reliable is the system in coming to this bus stop and getting people to where they want to go? Uh, and then at a global level, we can talk about mode split. That's one way to measure. How well we're serving all of these modes of transportation, how, what percentage of people are using vehicles versus active transportation in the future? Do we see that demand change based off of the facilities that are present? So level of traffic stress is one way to measure the level of service for active modes. And so we usually talk about it from LTS one to LTS four. And we'll measure these for facilities. Typically, it'll be a map where we map out bike lanes and we map out trails and sidewalks. And then based off of the characteristics of that facility, we'll come up with a level of traffic stress. One being the most comfortable. Usually that's like a separated path or something off of the road. Um, where that's not very close to vehicles moving at high speeds that you feel comfortable or that most people would feel comfortable walking on. Including kids and LTS two or, or better is WashDOT's target for level of traffic stress for their active transportation facilities. LTS four is like a very proficient bicyclist who's very comfortable weaving in and out of traffic. Uh, that doesn't really need a bike lane, can work with sharrows. That's that kind of facility. Um, so that's one metric we can use to measure a multimodal level of service. Um, when we talk about congestion, we want to ask, are we trying to build our way out of congestion or is there a better way to do it? Capacity projects are very useful, um, and can be super beneficial, but can also be very expensive. It's expensive and eat up a lot of a transportation budget. Um, we want to consider. Um, safety, increased vehicle capacity can also adversely affect safety. And we want to ask, can the system operate more efficiently before we start building capacity projects or adding new lanes? Um, so some resilient responses to congestion that we consider or talk about in other transportation plans. We're considering for this are safety improvements, ITS or Information Technology Systems. And targeted vehicle capacity. So can we make intersections work better together? Can we time it better? Could there be a turn pocket here at this intersection that really improves the operations rather than looking at a corridor-wide capacity improvement? And then looking at multimodal expansion. On a congested corridor, could we introduce a transit line? Or a new active transportation facility that provides another way for people to get around and reduce congestion? And that's the idea of a complete street is a street that serves all modes of transportation. Something that we can talk about in the element if we feel like it's a goal for the city to talk about. It was specifically referenced in the previous transportation plan uh, as part of a, the twenty twelve comprehensive plan update cycle. Um, as something that the city was trying to aim for is a street scape. So this is just an example from the Federal Highway Administration of what a complete street could look like that tries to serve all modes. We want to make sure that we're talking about how the city can fund maintenance on the roadways. It is a lot less expensive to perform maintenance on a roadway. Uh, when the issue is small, rather than letting the issue get large and needing a, an entire rebuild of a street. Is a lot more expensive than uh, resurfacing. So that's just something, it's a return on investment if you preserve what you have now. That's something we'll talk about. And then also elements of sustainability, um, talking about equity, how are we serving? The transportation system and who's using it? How are we going to fund this in the future? Where, where are the funding sources coming from? Stuff like that. So, uh, to briefly touch on the previous plans here. We um, are largely going to be using the twenty thirty transportation plan. As kind of a basis or a template of where we're going to move from. Um, it was published in, or adopted in twenty twelve and talked about conditions in twenty twelve around the city. Primarily focused on vehicle conditions, but also referencing active transportation facilities um, and transit. And then it looked ahead to twenty thirty in terms of vehicle service. Uh, and based off TRPC model, models tried to provide an idea of what vehicle service might look like in twenty thirty. Uh, it, the vision of the plan was multimodal in nature. This is just a blurb from the plan. Evaluating all transportation modes enables the city to address its future needs in a comprehensive manner. And supports the goal of reducing dependency on single occupancy driving. The twenty eighteen pedestrian bicycle plan uh, had three guiding principles, make it safe, make it connected and build momentum. And it identified and prioritized projects that, that met those principles. And so we're using those, these plans and the projects that were identified in these plans as the basis for. This transportation project list that we're going to develop as part of this transportation element. And then we're going to look at other uh, gaps. We're going to be looking at the transportation improvement program, the capital facilities plan. And the projects that have been identified uh, by the city in those plans. And then also any mitigation projects or projects that can be used to solve. Existing deficiencies or future deficiencies we s- we see in our vehicles. Alright, so we're looking for your feedback now, based off transportation themes or things that we talk about in transportation elements. The previous plans and the title envisioned tomorrow for this comprehensive plan update. What themes would you like to see emphasized as part of this transportation element?
So earlier this evening, we heard from Hans about the community engagement, um, and some of the common themes that came out of that. And one was uh, increased connectivity. So those are the types of. Input and feedback we're looking for right now from Planning Commission. What are your major themes? Or what are your priorities in transportation? I don't know, could we go around? By uh, each, each planning commissioner and, and see what your thoughts are?
Eddie, you want to start?
Yeah, I have a couple of thoughts. Um, early on in the presentation, you referenced a couple of times, you referenced land use. And especially for pedestrians, but I think um, I'm curious about. If there's going to be any connectivity between the transportation element. But I think um I'm curious about if there's going to be any connectivity between the transportation element and the land use element because um just as an example, where I live, I could go walk for exercise very easily. We've got sidewalks, we've got trails, all kinds of stuff that I could get to very safely. But I can't go get milk because the closest store is like three miles away. So we we covered a lot of this with the commercial uh neighborhood commercial. But I'm just wondering if there's going to be any, if those two pieces are going to be connected somehow in the comp plan that says we want people to be able to walk to a grocery store or a movie theater or a park. Um and the second aspect of that is the street I live on. Um we have decent transit service, but we can't use it because we can't cross the street. It's a mile between safe places to cross the street.
So access to transit.
You can get on the bus, but when you get off, you either have to walk, you you have to walk a mile to get to get across the street. And so is that part of the strategies to improve those types of deficiencies? Even though, you know, a bus comes every twenty minutes or whatever, realistically, you know, unless you're willing to play Frogger, you're you're just not going to do it because you can't get across the street.
Right, no, those are definitely things that we've looked at in other transportation elements and we can definitely consider that for this transportation element. Um points of interest is one way that we can map connectivity for active transportation facilities. We can put down grocery stores, libraries, schools, and then say, are there any sidewalks or any facilities that really get people from the neighborhood to this area or where are the crossings even? And then we also can look at transportation accessibility. Where is the nearest crosswalk to this bus stop? How are people getting to this location? What are the route directness indexes? That's another measure of multimodal level of service that we can use. Like how far out of the way do you have to walk to get to this location? So those are definitely things we can consider analyzing for this plan.
One of the things I'll mention too is that um related to land use is that um yeah, and we we have to make sure that the transportation and land use elements are are intertwined. Um but some of the the things you mentioned, Eddie, were like, um oh, if, you know, I wanted to go get a gallon of milk. And one of the things that we want to make sure we're, you know, in close, you know, connection to places where people can do that to a to a park or walking distance to a corner store or something something like that. Um in in, you know, especially along some of our corridors, we do have neighborhood commercials, specific areas that haven't built out yet. And so some of it is like, well, we can set the framework we we have in the last twenty years for these uses to happen. It's up to the private sector to provide the the store for you to shop at, right? And so some of those things, we, some of the zoning and some of the land use stuff that has been in place for a long time. We are still at this point, still waiting for the market to provide those those types of uses, so. Um and another thing I was going to mention, getting back to some of the themes we heard as part of the public outreach. We'll get into a little bit more information, especially as we move forward to the joint meeting with the council. We did actually a mapping exercise where we had people put pins on the map, like where they live, where they went to school. How do you get there? Are there any gaps or those kinds of things in the way? Um we just don't have the ability to share that tonight. The the survey is not closed. We want to be able to, you know, have a a comprehensive kind of show around that. And so we'll provide you with more information, but you know, the this is something that we're definitely aware of. And you've you've seen it in the public outreach, how important a interconnected, you know, transportation system is to the public. And so we definitely want to make sure that we recognize that in the comp plan. Thank you.
Yes, um I think there are fewer topics that are more polarizing than this is roundabouts. The installation of roundabouts. I think if there's a theme about why and where these are going to be planned in and we see it more and more replacing traditional intersections for a lot of the reasons that you described and the rationales that you we've heard of. Um it's better for the environment, right? Less idle time and keeps the pace of traffic moving. But people either love them or hate them or don't know how to use them or they're not marked fully to facilitate people who might not be familiar with the area. So I think roundabout planning, if if there's there's talk about them going into places that they aren't right now. Um I think there ought to be some sort of really good explanation um that would appeal to a lot of different agendas on why they're being planned and what purpose they'll serve, other than these top obvious ones. Because the it just brings a lot of passion, I think, when you talk about roundabouts and traffic, right?
And I believe that there are plenty planned in the future. So we could definitely talk about them as part of that project list.
It's it's a vulnerability and just people don't know how to use them or why we're putting them in or um, you know, what's the upside. But I think there should be a theme around explaining and um and see, talking about the needs that it's it's needing to be put in.
Yeah, um what I'm noticing in in my neighborhood, we are very close to um midtown. So we're close, we could walk to the grocery store. In fact, I have a little rolly cart sometimes of just, I'll just walk to to the store, which I absolutely love. Close to bike trails and close to public transit. Um but for my son, he can hop on the bus and get to school and come back really quickly. But to go other places, it is within our city transit, the availability of routes to get from A to B makes it so that um, you know, instead of taking an hour and a half or two hours to get to a place, it's easier just to hop in your car and take a a ten minute drive. So increasing the access to um have buses to go from A to B would make taking the buses, I think, a lot more feasible and being able to reduce those trips. And I think that also the walkability, it's hard being in an older neighborhood with narrow streets as uh different, you know, multifamily housing is coming in. And so those narrow streets are becoming one raid roads or one lane roads a- at times. And I I don't know where, including new sidewalks in old neighborhoods, it's truly feasible. But feeling safe when you're walking on a street, not having to worry about cars that might be uh coming up as 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 more vehicles are are coming into neighborhoods. So um kind of like crossing the this street and it's um adding that safety element.
Yeah, that's great. We have worked with uh jurisdiction recently and they were like, we we can't tell Pierce Transit what to do in our plan. We would like them to provide more service. Um but their goal is to try to create policies that try to encourage Pierce Transit to come in and to work more closely with them. So one of their policies is just, we're going to work more closely with Pierce Transit, so.
Yeah, and we we did that successfully in our last transportation plan update, uh especially getting transit to northeast Lacey. So that was a focus of the planning commission at that point. And so, you know, this is maybe the kind of the next iteration is. And I am aware that that inner city transit is is at least talking about changing their 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 transit model. Or it's right now, it's really focused around the transit centers themselves. And maybe instead of having it be this, what they call a hub and spoke model, which is all kind of centered around each individual transit center, is have it be more kind of corridor based. So you would actually be able to hop on a bus and get all the way, on the same bus, all the way to Tom Water. Instead of, you know, right now, having to change multiple buses multiple times, be able to do that. So stay tuned, I think there's more on that front, but we can certainly support their efforts to do that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and then speaking of local road sidewalks and stuff, jurisdictions do it differently. Some don't plan at all around local roads and don't talk about that existing infrastructure. So I think that discussion needs to come up a little bit more to decide which direction we're going to go on that kind of thing. But we do talk about collectors for most jurisdictions and up.
Want to talk about passionate, to try to put a sidewalk in some of the old neighborhoods. Have the people love them, have the people don't.
Spencer, did you have anything?
Yeah, yeah, I have a couple. So uh one of those was addressed directly. I I actually work at Inner City Transit and they are moving to the high density corridor route method. And they're going to be having three scheduled uh updates is what they call them over the next year and a half, which is going to change their model pretty significantly and add a lot of stops as well as improvements. Uh I won't give any specifics because a lot of that's still being enacted right now and that's not my place to talk on. Uh but I wanted to know, it it was brought up briefly. Are we in contact with them? From my knowledge, I'm not seeing that, but I'm not in their planning department. So uh are do we have liaisons at the city? Is our consultant talking with them, expressing, hey, this is our community's interest. We have this research. Is it being given to them? I don't know the answer to that, so I'm curious about that. And then I have another question afterwards.
Yeah, I I pretty much meet with them monthly.
And and the consultant for the transportation element for the comp plan will be meeting with them. We're we're still pretty early on board here in our in our in our work efforts. But there's certainly uh a uh a key uh, uh I want to call them stakeholder, if you will, that uh we will be communicating with frequently.
Okay, and then uh, you know, there's there's a lot of amazing ideas in this and and I personally love the concept of the complete road. I think that encompasses what our city has given us in feedback in terms of walkability, multimodal transportation. But I'm also wondering how economically feasible is this in our community at the moment? When we're going into lower sales tax projections and budgetary constraints and we want to have the Cadillac or the luxury package. How are we going to fund that? Uh I mean, I'm glad that we're identifying that that vision. Is there going to be steps along the way to get there?
Yeah, one of the elements of the transportation element is a funding analysis and trying to figure out where those funding sources are coming from. What does the next twenty years look like? So we don't have all the answers now and it is an expensive solution a lot of times. Um some cities are looking at how we can road diet or take a road that's currently four lanes and take it down to two based off the existing volumes and then using that existing right of way to make a cheaper complete street that doesn't require a lot of rebuild. Uh but just maybe some new landscaping. So there there are ways to look at cheaper complete streets. Uh but yes, ultimately, you know, everything costs money and we need to figure out where that those funding sources are coming from.
Okay, do you have any similar sized cities that have done these transitions or are in these transitions? So that we can look at data and information about that?
Actually, we're doing one, uh bids open tomorrow, the College Street north of by uh Martin Way. We're going to convert the existing Martin Way to three lanes and then extend all the way to fifteen.
Okay, we've seen other similar projects. I can't think of an example off the top of my head, Dan, maybe you can of one that's been implemented recently. But I know there are a lot of jurisdictions moving that way. Um I know that Kent is looking at.
Well, even Washdott.
Even Washdott, yes.
Towards complete streets, yeah, and so. And and quite frankly, the um, one of the issues that Washdott is facing is funding. And so um, you know, that, like Stephen said, um we will have a funding element and we'll be exploring different uh potential funding sources uh to do uh but essentially the project list that we come up with in the transportation element. So it's a valid question, a valid point, where's the money going to come from? And we're we're not, we don't quite have answers for you yet, but it it will play out over the course of the next uh few months in terms of uh how that element is uh addressed in the in the comp plan.
And we'll have to work closely with the city to understand current funding and those kind of constraints.
I'll go out of order, but just because I have a follow up to Spencer's. On the complete streets, I worry a little bit, correct me, is it the form based construction that's bringing the buildings right out to the street? Is that, you know, do we run the risk of, or do we need to make sure we build in the planning process with um, you know, whether it's apartment complex or a building approval, that we anticipate the future of maybe a complete street by having the amount of land available based on? Because I I worry, you know, you say, wait, that building's up there, we have no room to advance, we can't expand this road, we can't hit another lane, we can't build a bike lane, we're done.
Yeah, so when we do a approval, land use approval of a a new development project, they have to, at a minimum, dedicate the amount of right of way that's needed for the ultimate section, the roadway section that's going to go in front of their building. At at the most, they have to build the full improvement all the way to their property line. So in in kind of everything in between, so um depending on on the scope and scale of the project. And so if you're seeing a new building, for example, and it's going up right to the edge of the right of way and it's got, you know, a sidewalk, planter strip, you know, landscaping, sidewalk, bike lane, that's its ultimate development, right? And so at that point, we're not planning for any future widening. Uh most of those are on what we call strategy corridors that are kind of built out to their max capacity and aren't going to get any larger. And so we don't really set aside any land for additional beyond that, uh right, right?
Okay, thank you. Elliot, did you have anything? You're on mute.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
He's trying.
There we go. I'm trying to be careful what I say because I'm on paint fillers. So they're done. I'm I'm an old liberalist. When I see behavior modification, immediately the back of my spine kind of goes, wooey. Um are we going to be paying for this through zones like England did? Where people have to stay in their zone and if they go outside their zone, all of a sudden you have a fee. So I hear the concerns about money and when when Democrats talk about money, it's always, let's go through fines and behavior modification. You know, so I would I would rather keep freedom and keep a township rather than these complete street concepts.
I'll just wait, I, we're we're not looking at, um, you know, we'll we'll, as Stephen mentioned, we're going to have to do a comprehensive funding strategy as part of the the transportation element. But, you know, we're not looking at doing congestion charging or pricing that way or, you know, anything like that. I mean, we, we're not going to be fundamentally changing our our funding structure. Um so, you know, for example, you know, develop new developments, pay their fair share. Um i- if you have existing um deficiencies, those things are paid for either, you know, out of our existing funding sources as a city or through grants. So those are the things we'll be, we'll be doing. We're not going to be changing any, you know, not going to be changing anything fundamentally about our funding structure.
Well, thank you.
Tony, did you tell anything?
No, I just, um, the only thing that I just want us to remember that the thing that we always hear is that people want to make sure that this is a walkable city and that we have to recognize that a lot of people moving into our city are senior citizens and that sidewalks are key. Uh my parents are in their late seventies and they can, and our our sidewalks right now are, the trees are so uprooted, they can't walk. And so I just want to make sure that we're very mindful of that, that um that when we're talking about transportation and um and the comprehension plan and all this, that that we think about the different the different demographics of our city and who's moving in.
Okay.
Great, yeah.
I think we can skip our status.
Yeah, well, yeah, more to come on the transportation element for sure. So uh, yeah, with that, we're in the home stretch. So Jennifer, if you want to hop in and uh we'll move on to the final element uh in front of you tonight, which is the housing element.
My script on my computer screen here itself.
Yeah, just uh share the screen, so that's just the.
So, so my presentation is just on my laptop, but is it loaded up here?
Yeah, does it share at the bottom of the screen?
And then.
Right there.
You're on it. Share.
Oh, can I do it without?
Yep, just hit the hit the presentation button up at the top. Up a little bit, up a little bit, just a little bit. Yeah, you got it.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Click on it.
Yeah, so we.
History and safety.
We just advanced with a click on this one. Perfect, okay. Yes, I'm right and left, test my left hand skills. Well, first of all, um it's nice to see everybody again. Happy holidays and uh thank you for um, you know, being, you know, stewed this evening and listening to all of this great information. So we we do appreciate your time. So uh my style is just a li- little bit different than my peers this evening. So I'm going to just remain scripted because I've got a lot of slides that I'd like to go through. I wanted to provide a bit of a review for for you all as well, so. Um so therefore, the objective tonight again is to provide you with an update about significant legislation uh that will guide many components of our housing element update. Uh but first, the end of the year is a great time to. Uh, but first, the end of the year is a great time to review and acknowledge some of the work the city has done in the past uh, one to two years. Uh, while the following review may include items that the planning commission was not directly involved in. Um, all items in some way do impact our housing landscape and aim to uphold the values, visions and the goals expressed in uh, guiding documents. That help shape how Lacey approaches housing initiatives in our community. So simply put, we need more housing in Lacey. Um, according to the uh, two thousand and twenty-four housing allocations for Thurston County. We need housing of all types to serve all income bands between now and two thousand and forty-five. So our current housing element element summarizes some values and objectives informed by community engagement and feedback. Uh, these include safe, affordable housing that is thoughtfully planned, neighborhoods that are functional and well located, and that strengthen community connections. So as we move uh, through this presentation this evening, um, I ask you to think about finding balance. Uh, so in other words, how can we strike the right balance between preserving our community's vision and values? While meeting new state housing mandates that will reshape some of our neighborhoods over time, such as with the middle housing initiative and accessory dwelling units. Achieving balance will not necessarily be a one size fits all approach, and it will require that we continue to thoughtfully and also to uh, intentionally plan for our community. Uh, so where are we now? Uh, let's go ahead and take a look at actions from this uh, from the recent past uh, that are either emerging um, or some that have been implemented. So, uh, the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tom Water and uh, Thurston County entered into an interlocal agreement for the development of Franz Anderson. Uh, road in partnership with the Low Income Housing Institute in January of two thousand and twenty-two. Lacey partnered in this effort with a commitment of a three million dollar contribution uh, to support the development. Um, that will bring seventy permanent supportive housing units uh, and also align with goals to achieve housing allocations. For vulnerable unhoused populations in our greater region. And a really very exciting project is emerging for the acquisition of land exclusively for affordable housing units. The property is located on Mullen Road and is made possible through partnership between the city, the Lot Alliance and the Thurston uh, Housing Authority. This is anticipated to provide much needed affordable units for seniors in our community and further several objectives across guiding housing documents. And then in the summer of two thousand and twenty-three, planning staff came and uh, briefed you on manufactured home park preservation. Uh, though further work uh, will be needed to affect positive change in these often marginalized communities, staff is continuing to work on this initiative. And will revisit the commission in the near future with further recommendations to begin to advance preservation efforts that align with our broader housing objectives. In addition, planning staff have continued our commitment on the regional housing council, serving on the technical support team. Um, and have helped advance our regional funding strategy for manufactured home parks. Uh, specifically for residents who are seeking to form a cooperative model of ownership. Um, that typically would occur under the more recent legislation that allows the first right of refusal to residents. Um, in order for them to pursue a purchase of their own community. So recent progress has also been made with a second application in our community uh, from MJR Development for an eight year uh, multifamily tax exemption. The project is located here in the Woodland District and is expected to bring in additional fifty units of market rate housing. Uh, which is also a need reflected in the two thousand and twenty-four housing allocations. And then in October of this year, the city council did vote to expand the MFTE program to the neighborhood commercial district. Uh, we expect to have an updated ordinance in the first quarter of uh, two thousand and twenty-five. This too will further housing objectives set forth in our housing action plan. And provide additional incentives for developers to include affordable housing units in their market rate multifamily projects and in more areas of our city.
And uh, sorry, but Karen, this is, this is what will extend that multifamily tax exemption to twelve years as well. So just wanted to. I knew we were going to, I knew we were going to get to it, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, it was, it was coming, it was coming. Okay, uh, so planning staff also briefed the commission on equity. Uh, recently with an opportunity to join the Black Home Ownership Initiative, which will be expanding their target areas here to Thurston County. So alongside the Regional Housing Council pledged to join the network, the commission recommended that Lacey become a partner as well in the network, network. So as this initiative uh, advances, we will begin to see opportunities in the future to support and further homeownership for those. Uh, who are generationally um, impacted by unequal homeownership opportunities in past decades. And then finally, uh, we started back in two thousand and twenty-three. Lacey partnered with the Thurston County Dispute Resolution Center to provide financial support for landlords and tenants seeking mediation for. Uh, a multitude of concerns. So to date, this has been steadily used. Um, and further supports broader housing goals to reduce displacement, uh, attempt to keep people housed, um, and then improve.
If you can hear me, I lost you at council chambers.
They're frozen on mine too, Spencer.
Maybe they have a technical difficulty.
I believe so.
Uh, they must.
It just crashed. I got a low bandwidth warning uh, ten minutes ago or so.
I wonder if we need to log off and load back on or if they'll log.
It's a good point. We may need to.
Yeah.
We're still live on YouTube. We're being streamed.
Oh, okay.
Just us.
Meeting adjourned.
Think there's a pass, a few things we want to do.
That's right. Uh, man, I I really miss.
Everybody.
Yeah. I like some of the vision, but I'm just concerned that the financial cost is going to be so high that. I don't see how we're going to do it without more taxes and that's just not tenable to our citizens.
Not it isn't. And just like this new energy thing where they wanted to have um, every event, you'd have to do an energy audit on your home. That means that all of a sudden, if I sold this house, I have to update the uh, the energy.
Oh, wow.
That's, that's substantial amount of money. That's.
That's a lot of money.
To add on to your home that you're.
And then I there, the council extending the multi ta- family tax exemption. Oh, hi, they're back.
They're back.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Hey, we we had a power glitch here.
Oh.
Um, so give us a second and we'll get things loaded up again. We we need to start the um, recording and stuff again. So give us one second.
Okay.
Okie doke.
We're having snacks.
I I adjourned the meeting in your absence. I'm kidding.
So it's already, it's not on.
Yeah, it looks like it is. So it didn't shut down. Okay, great. So uh, we'll just continue on. So my fear was that it went, when this happened, that it shut down the Zoom, but obviously. It didn't. You guys are still on it and it's still recording. So um, I think at this point you guys can hear us. Okay, we're still going. And so. Apologies on our end. I think they're doing some construction out of the parking lot. Um, so Jennifer, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, oh, right. I forgot that I have the, or, oh, here. Let's see if I can get it to. I know what else is still. Oh, um. Karen?
Yeah.
So sorry, do you know where the choice was? Should I go ahead and? We passing?
Nothing.
Yeah. Fantastic. Thank you so much. And then we put it back on that whole screen. Yeah, you. It didn't slide with me last time. Okay, so we are on slide twelve. Let's see. We should call them seven layers. It's different flavors. Let's just go. Okay, so I think we just covered dispute resolution. Fantastic. Okay. Um, so.
Minimize the people.
Oh, sure. Up on the, yeah, go over to the left. Just minimize. Yep. Oh, come on. There we go. Okay. Uh, so let's uh, let's go ahead and take a look at some general housing data. Uh, this data will most certainly inform our housing uh, element update. Okay, uh, so as you are aware, our population is continuing to grow across the state. Washington State is expected to realize another one point five million residents in the next twenty year planning cycle. Um, increasing the housing demand by approximately one point one uh, million additional housing units uh, across all income bands in the state. While it can be a little bit tricky to mine accurate population projections, uh, daddy, data for Lacey. Uh, does anticipate populations in the city and the urban growth areas to exceed a hundred and thirteen thousand by twenty forty-five. Um, and then on a side note, I understand that Burke Consulting Firm um, is uh, trying to help us out to produce more accurate numbers. Um, as Lacey is uh, fairly quickly realizing these projections already. Uh, so hopefully we'll have updated numbers uh, in the future. Um, okay, so uh, a critical question is who are we planning for? Um, House Bill uh, twelve twenty that I'll speak a little bit more about in just a moment to find seven income groups that jurisdictions must plan for. Uh, this will include planning housing for emergency shelters all the way through moderate income bands uh, determined by the federal AMI standards. So TRPC projects that Thurston County will add over fifty-four thousand units, uh, housing units between twenty twenty and twenty forty-five to meet our growing population. Uh, this graph here depicts the current availability of homes across income bands noted in blue and then highlights the projected countywide need noted uh, in the orange. So Commerce provides us with estimates of housing need by income group. Uh, need is especially acute for the low. Uh, the lowest income households with a seventy percent increase in housing for very low income households. Um, a threefold increase in housing for extremely low income households and then a twenty fold increase in permanent supportive uh, housing needs. So closer focus on low income need indicates that Lacey's share of housing needed to serve populations between the zero to eighty percent of the area median income. Is just under ten thousand units. For Lacey, the total housing unit need by twenty forty-five in the city and the UGA uh, is just about fourteen thousand units. Uh, so now that we know where we're at, um, and I have taken a look at some progress that we've already made, let's look at current legislative legislative mandates that Lacey must. Uh, plan for and reflect in our housing element, uh, and that will also inform our development code. Uh, the question then shifts to where are we going? Okay, so key housing legislation uh, includes House Bill twelve twenty that amends the Growth Management Act and requires that cities plan for housing for all income bands. Uh, document that need and their comprehensive plans and demonstrate that their policies allow uh, for that housing need. In addition, cities must assess racially disparate impacts, displacement and exclusion through policy analysis and then make efforts to address them. House Bills eleven, ten and twenty-three, twenty-one focus on the middle housing initiative that the commission has been briefed on. Um, and requires citywide ordinance that incorporates development, zoning and other regulations, uh, such as design specifications. Um, that allow for a variety of housing types in neighborhoods that are primarily residential. And then House Bill thirteen thirty-seven gives new mandates for the inclusion of accessory dwelling units. And increases the allowance of these units to uh, two per lot in all urban growth areas. Let's see. Let me just one second here. So slide twenty-two. Oh, I see it went backwards. Okay. All right. Thanks for your patience on that. Um, so considering again, who are we planning for the direction of House Bill twelve twenty mandates planning? That accommodates there again for all income segments of the population. In addition, a mandate is given that cities must identify sufficient land capacity. Um, in order to uh, meet this goal. So recently, um, our very own Ryan Andrews uh, briefed the city council on the combined efforts across cities. Um, and in partnership with TRPC who facilitated data analysis reflecting each jurisdiction's land capacity to support new housing units. And findings of the analysis indicated that no deficits are currently found um, or projected for Lacey. Um, and Ryan, if I'm correct on this, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, the way I read this was that in a scenario. Uh, where let's say the total unit capacity was met, um, Lacey would uh, have a surplus of of housing units that exceed the housing allocations projections.
So that's based on, just to, sorry to interrupt, but that's based on existing current zoning. So if we were to change our zoning one way or the other, maybe if we were going to eliminate units or add more, that surplus or deficit would would change that. And so as Jennifer mentioned, we are also updating our population projections and at the same time, that same work will analyze through those zoning changes. Um, that um, will it affect our housing allocation numbers? Because we, what we don't want to happen is. Do so many rezones and change things so that we end up in a, in a deficit, right? So we want to make sure that we meet or exceed the hous- housing allocations requirements that we, that we're going to mandated to plan under.
Thanks, Ryan.
Yep.
Okay, so uh, concerning the racially disparate uh, impacts. House Bill uh, twelve twenty further mandates that jurisdictions create policies to reduce displacement supporting housing equity through investing in low to moderate income housing. And continue to, continue to identify areas at high risk for displacement that may result from things such as zoning changes or perhaps development pressures. Um, in addition, the city must also identify any patterns of disinvestment. Um, and then strategically plan to address these, um, if if these are identified. So the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tom Water and then Yelm uh, have contracted as part of our comprehensive plan efforts. Uh, with a Seattle based agency um, called Uncommon Bridges to produce uh, an end deliverable um, of a report specific to each area. That addresses these requirements um, of the bill. So just to let you know, the 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 work is still in process. Um, and planning staff, uh, myself and Ryan and um, and our director um, are pretty actively engaged with the agency. Uh, to ensure, you know, the accuracy of the final report and that it does reflect the dynamics of of our community. Um, in addition, the process has included uh, what, you know, we have seen so far to be a fairly substantial level of community and stakeholder engagement. Um, to assist in understanding there again, our local uh, concerns and needs, um, but then also to identify things that are already working very well. Um, so as staff, we anticipate to see a final result of the analysis sometime in March of two thousand and twenty-five. Um, and then we'll return at a later date uh, to brief you more on the findings. So as mentioned, House Bills eleven, ten and twenty-three, twenty-one provide requirements for the inclusion of middle housing. Uh, with Lacy being a two, uh, tier-two city having a population above twenty-five thousand but below seventy-five thousand, uh, two middle housing units must be allowed on all lots where all other development regulations are met. Um, if at least one affordable unit is incorporated, uh, that number could then potentially increase from two units to four units. Uh, for example, where four dwelling units are proposed, this could be met by a combination, uh, of say two duplexes or maybe one four black, fourplex, uh, but there again, keeping in mind, uh, that that, that increased number would require at least one, uh, unit meets affordability standards. Um, while Lacy already meets, uh, many of these requirements that I've already spoken about here this evening, we do still have some work to do in terms of, um, how we're going to implement, uh, all of these provisions, uh, in a way that suits our community. Uh, so though the middle housing initiative is running, uh, somewhat adjacent to, uh, the housing element update, um, it will help inform, uh, changes in our, in our comprehensive plan. Um, so I'd like to share that recently a survey has been running on all of our applicable social media outlets, um, seeking feedback from our community. Um, in addition, a mailer, uh, alerting residents to the survey opportunity was sent to just over three thousand homes in areas that have been identified, uh, as probably most suitable to actually realize middle housing opportunities. For example, properties that were, or that are ten thousand square feet or larger, slightly older perhaps, um, and then I believe within about two hundred, uh, feet of sewer. And the survey specifically seeks input for, uh, things such as which types of middle housing the city should adopt through our ordinance, uh, for which we must include a minimum of six out of the nine identified, uh, by the state. And to date, the survey, uh, has been yielding a very good response. I would say we're close to a ten percent response. And I just looked as I was sitting over here and we are now up to three hundred and fifty-eight replies. Um, and people have, almost two hundred people have taken the time to give us, uh, some further opinions. And so that's gonna be really helpful to provide us with some real qualitative data as we continue forward with the middle housing initiative. So I'm gonna be looking forward to sharing those with you in the near future. Um, and then once the survey closes, which is anticipated, I believe later this month, uh, in December, uh, we, staff will assess, uh, the results and then of course, you know, we'll come back and we'll share those findings with you and have some deeper discussions about that. And then lastly, House Bill thirteen thirty-seven gives new guidance for the accessory dwelling units. Uh, the city must now allow for two ADUs per lot in urban growth areas on any lots that meet minimum lot requirements. It's important to note that with this bill and also with the middle housing bills, development standards must not exceed, uh, those of any of the principal units. So the city will have some latitude as we establish specific development standards to satisfy requirements um, and align with our community values and goals as we move forward. So really in conclusion, uh, you know, planning staff, uh, is feeling fairly, fairly good that, you know, with continued collaboration and intentional, uh, focus that Lacy can achieve housing that considers the needs of today um, and that also establishes, uh, to serve the vision for, for hopefully many tomorrows. Um, and that's, uh, pretty much all I had for you this evening and, you know, we're here for questions if there are any and thank you so much.
Stop sharing and.
Yes.
I think start with you again.
No questions.
Um, did you see how long that survey runs?
Uh, I believe we are going to, uh, twenty, is the twentieth, Hans, the twentieth of December when you're gonna, when the, uh, the other survey is expected to stop running.
Yeah, there, I think just, I mean, it being December and the audits.
That's great.
Which all city level activities tend to get less public attention. Um, so, yeah, I think we're gonna monitor response rates and it'll taper off this as we get down to zero.
I think it's just a great tool. Um, people that I hear talk about it, they reference that they got a mailer or they like the opportunity and the, you know, to just be able to respond that way and be thoughtful about it. Um, so I think it's a great tool.
Yeah, thank you for that feedback. It's great.
Your anything?
Oh, I was just curious about the, the same standards of the, of the building and I know that like some of the codes have been updated. So you're saying like if you have a fifties house or a, I don't know, turn of the century, it's like a, from the nineteen, early nineteen hundreds. Does it mean that your building code would be aligned with the code that, the current? I was a little bit confused about that.
That's, that's, that's okay. I can provide a little clarity. I think, um, I think actually, uh, really what it's talking about is, um, as middle housing, let's, let's take an ADU for example. Um, so you would have your primary residence in this scenario and you're gonna add one, let's say you're gonna add two ADUs, um, or maybe you're just gonna add a duplex or something. Uh, what the city cannot do, even though we're, we're going to have purview to make a lot of decisions with design and, you know, things like setbacks and things like parking. Um, what we can't do is make standards that are, um, uh, more, um, what's the word I'm looking for?
Bored.
Just, yeah, or intense or, um, than what is established already in code for the primary residence. So.
It's more about the aesthetics, I think, is the exterior part of the building. So it's gotta meet the same kind of roof pitch standards, the same height requirements, the same windows and siding types and those kinds of things. I think what it's getting at is it says, hey, you can't use any more restrictive requirements that what applies to the main unit. So, you know, you can't try to, cities, you can't try to like kill the, the little project through really onerous codes. You have to allow, you know, the same standard that applies to the main unit to apply for the, the subservient unit.
Thank you. Yeah. Does that help?
Yeah, I appreciate the clarification.
It's something that we don't do. So we're not gonna have to worry about it. But I think it, it, that maybe the legislature's concern on this one is that, you know, the jurisdiction would put so many requirements on the ADU that it would be a way to be able to like say, okay, we'll just put a de facto kind of like, you know, not allow an ADU in the first place, kind of as a way to be able to do that.
Elliot, did you have anything? Spencer? Anya?
All right. Can I do a build question if everybody got a chance on Karen's question?
Sure. I don't, I didn't have anything, so go ahead.
Okay. Um, with these ADUs, you just made me think of something. Um, if they're put on the property of an existing home, where are their driveways?
Ryan.
Yeah, so, um, they typically, um, they share driveway with the main unit. So there are limitations that we can put on parking for new ADUs. Um, so if you think about, um, an existing house, let's say it's got a two-car garage with two cars, uh, uh, you know, able to park in the driveway, then typically that'll meet minimum parking requirements for those four spaces. So they'll be able to share the driveway. What we, what we tend to see for a detached ADU that's either like on the side or the back of the house is that you have a shared driveway and then you have kind of like a walking path that gets to it in the back. So that's, that seems to be, um, kind of the mo- most frequent thing that we, we seem to, to, um, see. And also, you know, the, the state is also precluding us from doing a lot of additional requirements related to parking in the first place. And they're basically saying, hey, um, you know, parking for the, maybe you should go in the street. And, you know, there's nothing cities can really do about that now. Um, where in the past, we always required off-street parking. Now the state's preempting us from requiring additional parking for ADUs. And so, um, you know, so it's taking up street parking and, you know, older neighborhoods that people are parking like Karen was concerned about, you know, on the shoulders of the old roads. It creates, you know, hazards to try to be able to walk around and that kind of stuff and. Twenty seconds. Yeah. So it does create some, some challenges, um, uh, you know, that, uh, maybe through our existing codes, we were a little bit able, able to better address that the state is really coming out very strongly and saying, you need to require X number of units, you need to require, you know, middle, middle housing plus ADUs and you can't, you know, uh, parking is going to be very limited and you need to allow people to be able to park in the streets and those kinds of things. And so it's really a unique situation in my whole career because a lot of this, you know, a lot of Washington state planning law came out of local control. Like, hey, you know, GMA is kind of a broad framework where it says, you know, cities can do this, but they have some latitude and some decision-making. In the last few years, the state's actually kind of done this top-down kind of planning model and says, you know, thou shalt do these things. And that's really coming, to be very evident in the update to the housing element and our codes around things like middle housing and ADUs.
Have, have the state offered any like low rates, interest rates for, for people who would be considering to can, to go into this construction or?
Not that we've seen so far.
Financing, I know in my neighborhood when we came in before pandemic, it was, as soon as they said that those units were gonna cost more than what we paid for our homes, everybody, what, you know, was pretty much out of the room.
Right.
And it doesn't seem that it's really feasible in older communities with people, um, if any income level wanting to pay that much to, to have this type of construction. So until there's, there's support.
Yeah, there's definitely a, a market component to the viability of that type of construction. And, um, you know, you have to get to the point where maybe you have an old enough house that's dilapidated that can actually be torn down and redeveloped for like a, a duplex, you know, a duplex, triplex, fourplex with ADUs kind of situation. Or, you know, you, you have to look at it, you know, if you're gonna build something in your backyard and say rent it out, are you gonna be able to, will that pencil? You know, will that monthly rent be able to support the cost that you paid upfront for that accessory dwelling unit and pay you back over time? And, you know, right now, at least from, you know, what I can tell is that the economics are, it's still very expensive to build these. And so it, it doesn't necessarily pencil out. And so we're not seeing a, a flood of new applications. I mean, they do trickle in. Most of, I also, most of what we do see are, especially on the ADU front, seem to be either small rentals or, um, where somebody maybe lives in the, the main unit or it's like, uh, you know, family member situation or something like that. Um, we, we really have not to, not to this point at least, had a big push from the development community to build these. Um, and so maybe the, the closest one that I can think of is, uh, it's not in the city, but it's in the urban growth area. At the far end of Martin Way, if you ever drive, it's on, it's opposite intersection from the Curry Corner. So it's at, um, uh, Meridian and, uh, Martin Way, um, opposite. So that's the south side of Martin Way there. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, they're bu- building a brand new development there and a lot of those units are, have separated garages with ADUs actually in them.
Yeah.
And so that's the first one that I can think of where you've got a brand new development where ADUs are integrated into that development, um, upfront. And, um, as far as I know, it's been a fairly kind of popular idea. I don't know how well they've sold, but it's, it's something that's, that's happening. That, and that's, I think, part of the reason that that's successful is they're building, um, that's a, you know, a production builder that's building a lot of those units the same. And so it's, you know, there's very. An e- economy of scale there, so.
They're being built around a circle in the center. It's like a, a common area.
Yeah.
Be built in.
Yep, yep.
And I think if I may ju- oh, did I interrupt somebody here? Okay, uh, if I, if I may just quickly, you know, uh, kind of a couple of reminders as, as you are all out, you know, when in, in your own spheres of influence and constituents and so forth, and these things come up in conversation. One thing that I can say upfront about, uh, some results so far of, uh, the middle housing survey, um, is that there's definitely this continued, um, perception or misunderstanding that middle housing is synonymous, synonymous with affordable housing and, and that's not the case. And so I think, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's on, it's on us and those of us who are in these conversations to, um, you know, you know, help, help sort of correct that, um, because some of the feedback we get is, you know, this, uh, fear. So you've got the issue of people, some people opposing this increase in density, in density that could, you know, come as a result. Uh, but then over here, you've got, you know, this, um, fear of, of these units or these types of housing serving, uh, low income. And what we're seeing as you've been talking about down here is that it just isn't penciling and they're often just as expensive as, you know, maybe a small, single-family home. So not the same thing.
That always kind of.
Yeah.
It stings a little bit. I, I'm, in my neighborhood, I have, like, I, it seems like there's every type of house. There's a duplex that was just on the market for a million dollars and at the end of the block, there's an apartment building that's the housing authority. And there's all these other little houses and everything in between and triplexes and this is and that's and do. And it's a really great, wonderful community and all the people that, like, we meet at the bus stop. And it's, it hurts when, when people share their fears about low, low income people, not all of us have a million dollars just to, but that, we're all so wonderful people.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Yeah, so, uh, I, I feel like the city, the population of the city has said that we want this and I agree with that entirely. I just don't see a pathway where the city can not necessarily subsidize, but provide the incentives necessary for private developers to build these properties in the current economic climates. And I, I, I love the intention, but I just don't see a realistic pathway there that doesn't involve raising taxes. And it's already really expensive to live here. And you have this situation where people who lived here for a long time have massive swaths of property and that's fine. But anybody trying to become part of this community is essentially gonna get far less of the pie than anyone who came before. And it feels fundamentally unjust and I'm not sure with the, a lot of the initiatives the state's putting in that we can reasonably accommodate them and create the community that I think many of us or all of us in this room envision, where we do have the situation Kirian was talking about, where we have all of these mul- uh, multiple different types of housing. And, you know, that's where I wanna live, but looking at the economics of this area, that's not realistic and I don't know how we get there. And I feel like that is probably more of a council question than a planning commission question, especially since they're extending the multifamily tax exemption. Uh, uh, that's another one. I'm not understanding why they would extend that to people who are not building market rate or below properties. That's supposed to be an incentive in my understanding to increase the density, to provide more, not necessarily low income units, but affordable units. And I'm seeing lots of units and condos come in and they're still unaffordable. And I was fortunate enough to buy my home uh, just, just four years ago and get a great deal on it because I knew the people and they wanted me to have it. But if I had to go out and buy a home now with my salary, which is far more than the area median income, it's about what the area family median income is, I could not afford to buy a home in this community. And I wouldn't have any possibility of realistically raising a family and getting to that goal. And because of that, I feel like we're talking a lot about equity, but we're not providing the pathway there as a city for the people in this community. And I don't have the answer to that and I'm not complaining at anyone here. I'm just expressing this general frustration because I interface with a lot of younger people and they feel blocked out. They feel like there is no opportunity for them in this community and we need to figure out how do we get there? And, and I, I feel like that requires a lot more council input and, and I'm gonna stop there.
Yeah, uh, really good point.
Uh, yeah, excellent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think the only thing I'll, I'll, I'll add on to that. I, I agree with what you've said. I'll just say that, you know, re- really when it comes to ADUs, you know, the, the city has not really done anything to give people, let's say, any kind of like tax incentives or, or money to do these things, but we've, especially with ADUs, removed just about every barrier that exists possible. We, you know, I think at this planning commission as where we have plans available for units at our front counter that are free, pre-designed then approved and, and free of cost. Uh, you know, you can walk out our, our door with, you know, a permit in hand for about a thousand dollars with, to build one of those. And so at that point, really, you've got approved plans. All you need to bring is, you know, your builder and, you know, and it's still, we're not getting, you know, a, a big, you know, influx of these happening. And so, um, you know, the city's doing, I think, a lot and, and Jennifer had a, a, a number of really good slides on all the things that we're, we're trying to do to, 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 um, address these things. And it's, there's, you know, sometimes you have to think about, okay, what's the role of the government in this and, and what can we do? And at some point, you know, we can do these things, but it's, it, uh, you know. And at some point, you know, we can do these things, but it's, it, it, you know, it's, it's the market. Obvi- obviously, when it comes down to it, it's all, there's so much that goes into our housing market. It also, you know, you can also talk about wages and all those things as well. So, yeah, really good point, Spencer.
All right. I assume we have no old business because we've covered old business. Um, any announcements, communications other than meeting, next meeting is January eighth?
January eighth, yeah, yeah, we'll see you all then.
We are adjourned.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Happy holidays. Yep, take care, take care, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Have a great holiday.
Bye, everybody.
Any, that was probably our longest meeting yet.
I know and you, and you had to run it and everything.
Twelve thirty-four, how long have we been here? Yeah.